12th meeting of the Board of Supervisors. Good to see all the folks in the audience out here. So could we have a roll call, please?
Thank you, Chairman Madron. Supervisor Arroyo?
Here.
Supervisor Bushnell?
I'm here.
Supervisor Bone?
Chair. Here.
Chair Madron?
Present.
And Supervisor Wilson?
Here.
Thank you.
All right. Please join us for the salute to the flag.
The flag is to be lifted. The United States of America, and to the people for which it stands, one nation, one God, individual liberty and justice for all.
All right. Madam CAO Hayes, do we have any modifications to the agenda?
Good morning, Chairman Madron. There are no modifications this morning.
Wonderful. And the agenda is lighter than we thought it might be as several items either got pushed off into the future or were removed. And I had, based on the fact that it looked like it was going to be an extremely full agenda, you'll see in the agenda packet, I had reduced public comment to two minutes, but I'm bringing it back up to three minutes as usual. Whenever we have the opportunity, we want to hear from the public and give them a fair chance, although I will say two minutes is really nice as far as efficiency. So feel free to use less than the three, but it's back up to three minutes at this point. So with that, on the consent calendar, we have a couple of proclamations and resolutions. We're going to jump into those first unless there are any questions on anything at this point from the board. So we'll go ahead and do that. And the first one we have is to proclaim December 2023 as Human Rights Awareness Month. And I see Jim Glover is here today to accept this for the Human Rights Commission. So thanks for being here, Jim. Whereas the United Nations Assembly adopted the Universal Declaration of Human Rights in December 1948, and this marked the first attempt in human history to set down the minimum rights every person should enjoy. And whereas in 2023, public awareness and a lack of civility has grown amongst groups of people and individuals in their ability to discuss topics of the day without anger or fear. And whereas speech, whether free or inhibited, is now strained by intolerant adversaries and from a multitude of pressures, including but not limited to statements by family members, public officials on social media and in schools. And whereas hate speech, intolerant language, bias and discrimination have led to actions which are physically violent, emotionally intimidating, and in some cases cause physical harm, such a transformation within our culture is now eroding and will continue to further erode the peace and tranquility our community expects and deserves. And whereas while Humboldt County represents a small, mostly rural population within the framework of our county, we must all act in ways big and small to change the climate within our control and strive to uphold and defend the right of free speech. And whereas in December 2023, individuals, local organizations, agencies, departments, elected officials and public servants choose a different path, a path that acknowledges peace, harmony and human rights for all. In doing so, we vow to engage hate at all levels possible during the year 2024. Human rights and freedom from fear must exist for all people or they exist for no one. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes December 2023 as Human Rights Awareness Month and encourages all residents to educate themselves about the Universal Declaration of Human Rights, to value the privileges and freedoms we enjoy in our diverse society, and to promote engagement in causes that promote the rights and welfare of our members in our community, especially among our youth. During this time, we advocate for special civic engagement to occur, for personal reflection to take place, for continued efforts to educate the public, and for a community effort to use kindness instead of hate regardless of personal perceptions and political views. So. Thank you. I wish to say some words, just a couple things, please. Okay, thanks. Board of Supervisors, I'm very happy to accept the proclamation that you have just heard on behalf of the Human Rights Commission and all citizens of all religions, creeds and colors within our communities. Several of the whereases in the proclamation noted our society's struggles to discuss anything difficult while retaining respect and sincerity. This difficulty with civil discourse may have national implications, but it is something we confront in our very local daily lives. One step we can all take is to acknowledge our individual part in discussing those difficulties with people of differing views while still maintaining civility. One of the civil engagements that was mentioned in the proclamation is going to be followed up by the Human Rights Commission. In late February, at the Sequoia Conference Center, the Human Rights Commission, in cooperation with the League of Women Voters, will conduct a forum on hate speech versus free speech. We hope anyone with thoughtful ideas to contribute will join us and offer ideas in advance of this public gathering. Thanks again for acknowledging the ongoing work needed to protect the human rights of all our friends and neighbors, even with those who we disagree. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. And I just wanted to make a quick comment here. Sheriff Hansel still here? Yeah, I believe he is in the audience. I wanted to thank the sheriff and his folks along with the FBI for the work they're doing up at Mack High to try and figure out what's going on with these threats of violence and the bomb threats and stuff. Thank you so much for engaging in that and hopefully it'll be resolved soon and we can move forward. But, you know, given Human Rights Week and every proclamation this month, I just wanted to make that comment. I know a lot of people in the community are very concerned for their children and all. So thank you, Sheriff Hansel. Appreciate your efforts and your staff. So the next item we have is a resi-- yes, please Supervisor Bone.
Well, and I was going to mention about the human rights. I think we're the 26th or 27th smallest or largest county, whichever way you want to make you feel better. And but I do believe we are the smallest that has a Human Rights Commission. And there's quite a few above us that don't have it. So the forethought and the years I've been here and everything else to support it as well as we can shows, you know, that Humboldt County does care. So I always like that statistic because most of, a lot of counties our size and a lot smaller don't have it, and some a lot larger than us don't have it. So thanks. And Jim, thanks for carrying on. You're like the ever-ready rabbit. You're always around.
Dedication, definitely. And Supervisor Arroyo?
Jim, could I ask you to repeat the details for that event? It happened very quickly and I didn't get a chance to capture it, and I'd love to share it with folks, too.
Okay. The conference or the forum that we're putting on is February 21st from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the Sequoia Conference Center. It will be an in-person event with panelists from various specialty experience and representing various groups of people who may have fallen into the clutches of hate speech. There will be seven panelists, live audience. It will be televised on Access Humboldt and it will be on Zoom.
Wonderful.
Okay.
Awesome. Thank you so much. If you do end up having a flyer or anything that you could send our way, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
And you know, this would be a great time to thank Jim and all the members of the Human Rights Commission for all their hard work, really. As Supervisor Bone said, ever-ready rabbit, you've been at this for a long-- how many years have you been involved with human rights, Jim? Nine years. Nine years. Thank you for that dedication. Very important. Supervisor Wilson?
Jim, I just want to thank you and the commission for the updates that occur. I mean, it's not the same resolution every year that actually pertains very specifically to sort of the feeling and not just the feeling, but really the actual situation that we're experiencing both locally and nationally. I just really want to appreciate that, you know, just bringing it present. And I really just, everything else, of course, I appreciate, I love all that, but I just really want to point out just the presence of the message. So thanks.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Well, it's been said by everyone up here, but I really appreciate your words this morning and the work that you do on the Human Rights Commission as well as the commission. So I also want to thank you. And I just really appreciate your words, Jim, and the insight that you have and the conversations I've had with you.
Great. Thank you so much. All right. Next, we have a resolution in support of designating an area on State Route 101 in memory of Eugene B. Joe Thomas. Supervisor Wilson?
So, let's see, a little while back, the family of Joe Thomas approached me about the designation of a piece of our highway system, which you see around quite a bit. They, I'm just trying to get to, they're a local family that's been here a long time. And Eugene Joe Bertram was an engineer for Caltrans. And so I'll just read this resolution and I'll, we'll get started on that. So whereas Joe, Eugene Joe Bertram Joe Thomas was born on April 2nd, 1924 in Eureka. And whereas Mr. Thomas graduated from Eureka High School in 1942, and while in high school learned to fly at Pierce Flying School at Murray Field. And whereas Mr. Thomas attended one semester at Humboldt State College in 1942 before joining the United States Army in 1943. And whereas Mr. Thomas became a pilot of the B-24 Liberator in the 15th Air Force, the United States Army stationed in World War II. And whereas Mr. Thomas and his crew were shot down over Yugoslavia and spent 41 days trapped behind enemy lines, the final crew of the Forgotten 500 to be rescued on December 28th, 1944. And whereas Mr. Thomas was assigned a position flying for the OSS after the war. And where Mr. Thomas returned to Humboldt County in 1945 to resume life as a civilian, attend Humboldt State College before graduating from Stanford University with a degree in civil engineering. Go civil engineers. Whereas Mr. Thomas began a lifetime career as a California State Division of Highways and later named Caltrans. And whereas Mr. Thomas engineered spans of Highway 101 up and down from Humboldt, Delnort and Mendocino Counties. And whereas Mr. Thomas and his family moved from Eureka to Sacramento in 1969 when he was promoted to headquarters for Caltrans, eventually rising to chief maintenance engineer for the entire state. And whereas Mr. Thomas exemplified the greatest generation, service, patriotism, strength of character, hard work, generosity, resilience, and therefore it is appropriate to designate a portion of U.S. Highway 101 in honor of Eugene Joe B. Thomas. Therefore, it is resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby request that a portion of U.S. Highway 101, post mile 86.5 to post mile 89.00 near Arcata, which is the area where most of his local family resides, in Humboldt County, is designated to as, will be designated as Eugene B. Joe Thomas Memorial Highway. So this, that's the resolution. This is our request to have that done. It has not been done. This is the beginning of that process, and so here you go. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Supervisor Wilson. And next, we have a retirement resolution for Vesta Warner. And is Vesta here today? Yes, wonderful. And some of your compatriots, it looks like, as well. So we'll go ahead and read that resolution and then present that to Vesta. Whereas Humboldt County Department of Health and Human Services supervising behavioral health clinician and licensed clinical social worker, Vesta Warner, is retiring after nearly 26 years with the department. And whereas Vesta was hired as a mental health caseworker in January of 1998, and during her tenure at DHHS, Vesta worked as a senior case manager, social worker for A, for C, social worker supervisor II, mental health clinician II, supervising mental health clinician, and ultimately a supervising behavioral health clinician, the position she was retiring from. That is impressive. Whereas Vesta has long been the supervisor of DHHS's Healthy Moms Program, which supports women with substance use disorders who are pregnant or parenting a young child and provides intensive outpatient services, including assessment, case management, recovery groups and free childcare. And whereas one of her staff said since she started working in the Healthy Moms Program six years ago, Vesta has always been consistently patient, gentle and kind, and willing to provide a professional, provide professional guidance. And whereas another of her staff said, Vesta has been one of my biggest cheerleaders and encouraged me to reach further than I ever thought possible because she sees something in every person that she meets that most others don't, heart and potential. And whereas staff said Vesta never wavered from being compassionate, supportive and respectful to clients and advocated for them in times of desperate need while simultaneously building them up and empowering them to strive for positive change in their own lives, which has helped make her a great leader, teacher, supervisor and community advocate. And whereas colleagues say Vesta has a heart of gold and is a fun, loving, free spirit who touches souls and stands for what is fair and right and fights for every person to be treated respectfully, no matter who they are, because she believes everyone is important. Now therefore be it resolved that the Humboldt County Board of Supervisors hereby recognizes, honors and expresses our gratitude to Vesta Warner for her years of dedication to the county, her coworkers and the clients she has served, and wishes her a long and happy retirement.
Thank you. It's been my, I've had a great career and so many opportunities with DHHS, and I just want to say it's been, it's been a great, it's been a great career. So thank you.
You're welcome. There you go. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Come on up, folks. Come on in there. You guys get on this. Come on up, folks. Come on in there. You guys get on this. Come on up, folks. Very.
He's going to tell you, he's going to tell you exactly what.
Three, two and one.
Thank you so much. Thank you. That's nice. Okay. You're not. Oh, okay. Connie Beck, Health and Human Services Director. I don't think I told Vesta when I asked if she wanted a resolution that I was going to make her come up here and hear the conversation. So just a couple of things. Recently, Vesta represented DHHS in the city of Eureka's Town Hall. Wonderful representation. If you haven't seen it yet, let me know and I'll send you a copy. Not just Vesta, but others did such a wonderful education of our substance use disorder treatment that's available in our county and other things. Also, Vesta's been a part of our wellness court that we have with local tribes and judges, and they meet on a regular basis. Her staff, I'll just say, what a wonderful leader that she's been, such a great part of our team. I just was joking with her the other day. We grew up together. I feel like this room should be full of people because of the people that, families and children that you've touched over time. That doesn't say that in there, too. If the number of people and children that you've impacted positively would be wonderful. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And I think there's a couple other folks that would like to speak too. Okay, gosh. Try to hold it together here. Hi.
Thank you. My name is Ahit Tiana. I'm a mental health clinician or behavioral health clinician at the Healthy Moms Program. And I just want to share that it has been my privilege to work with Vesta Warner as my supervisor for the past six years at the Healthy Moms Program. From the first moments of my experience at Healthy Moms, Vesta took the time and care to welcome me and make me feel comfortable as part of the team. She supported me in my professional development as a clinician and was always willing to meet with me to answer questions and provide guidance. She was consistently patient, gentle and kind. In my experience working with Vesta, she never once wavered from being compassionate, supportive and respectful to clients. This is one of the qualities I admire about her the most, her deep commitment to client-centered care. I have watched numerous times as even the most vulnerable, fearful clients were able to find comfort in her warm, personable approach. I have seen her advocate for people who are in times of desperate need, supporting others while simultaneously building them up and empowering them to strive for positive change in their own lives. I think it is a very special person who can hold and wield a massive amount of experience, knowledge, wisdom and personal power while remaining genuinely humble, unassuming and approachable with others. I believe that Vesta is such a person. In all my years of working with her, I never felt criticized or judged, and I felt safe coming to her with any questions and concerns. She has a wonderful ability to make others feel at ease around her, a precious quality for any person, but especially so for a clinician and a supervisor. I'm very sorry to lose Vesta as our supervisor at Healthy Moms. She will be very sorely missed, but I'm happy for her to be able to step into this next exciting chapter of her life and enjoy the benefits of retirement. She has dedicated so much of her life and her energy to working and service to others, and I can't imagine anyone deserving it more. Thank you. Thank you, Vesta.
Thank you. We'll do hugs after. Hi.
Hi. Good morning. Emmy Botzler Rogers, Behavioral Health Director. Just echoing what's already been said, I think the things that strike me as critical and important are that Vesta's been with us for two and a half decades, and that's a huge commitment. She's also worked across our system, so she's really committed to the work in our community in a variety of ways. Probably the most important piece in my mind is just hearing the testimony of how she engages others and that that's, that's the work of stigma and discrimination, addressing stigma and discrimination. She engages with staff, she engages with the community, with clients in ways that allow to make, allow recovery to happen. So without judgment, just human to human. And I think that's the work that is most important in our, in our field. So thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. I have to go cry now.
Thank you so much. Supervisor Bone, you got a few more comments coming up here, Vesta?
Jim Glover, it sounded like when Supervisor Madron was reading that, it sounded like she's a perfect candidate for the Human Rights Commission. So, you know, if you're actually doing your job appropriately, you'd be, you know, giving her an application right now. She has time on her hands.
Supervisor Wilson and then Supervisor Bushnell?
This one hurts in a few ways. One is, I remember Vesta when we were very young. And so it's like, and I'm thinking to myself, this, rolling with the, rolling with the crew, the young, young punks around Arcata back in the eighties, good times. But I, and, and I just want to, and then now, and then we're moving into the retirements, right? Okay. So there's, there's a little bit of that. But I just want to, you know, this dedication to the community and to that, to the entire department is, is something to be celebrated. I am, I'm just really thankful for the work. And as I always say, that this is the group of people that are mending the fabric of society, the frayed edges that are holding it together. I mean, so much of what we do is just, you know, on the everyday is keeping the wheels on the bus, right? And holding it together, but then also inspiring the bus to move forward. And I just really appreciate that work that you've done in that and being able to follow. I took a picture of you, by the way, and I'm going to send it to a couple of friends. I'm so excited. So anyways, thanks for all that, really.
Supervisor Bushnell?
I just wanted to say congratulations. I didn't have the opportunity to work with you at all, actually, but, you know, I've only been here three years, but I want to say congratulations. Definitely made an impact around, and I hope you enjoy your retirement.
Great. Supervisor Arroyo?
Well, I'm sad that I didn't have the chance to go to punk shows with you, but maybe I will in the future. I, I just was so impressed while hearing the resolution read. You know, I haven't gotten a chance to work with you directly, but just what Emmy said, hearing about the breadth of services that you've done as a clinician and with community members who, who really need that support the most and need kindness to be able to live safe and healthy lives. It's, it really means so much. So thank you for, for being there and for inspiring a new wave of folks to, to fill those big shoes that you're leaving. So thank you.
Okay. Any other comments, questions from the board on the consent calendar before we go to public comment? And seeing none, we'll go to public comment. And my Zoom keeps acting up. Are there any hands? I see one hand up in Zoom. We've got 0116. You've got three minutes to comment. Please tell us which item on the consent calendar you're speaking on, and then I'll come to those here in the audience next. 0116, there you go. Welcome.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, I'm speaking on the, the resolution with the Human Rights Commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah. I just wanted to talk about something, um, if any of you noticed, I'm sure you did, that recently multiple heads of universities stepped down from their positions after failing to condone anti-Semitic speech across the country. These same universities, like also, I think it's one here in California, also proclaimed hate speech is free speech just to support these same anti-Semitic speech that's tied to the recent Israel-Palestine conflict, which you see with the protests going on and the push for proclamations from the, you know, Eureka City Council. I'm sure they've probably sent stuff to your board as well. But many of these same universities, they've also previously banned conservative speakers for speaking on their campuses over, you know, much, much lighter speech, not, you know, talking of genocide or anything like that, but it seems to be really putting a light on how political the whole hate speech is at some times. So I just wanted to point that out, that there, there seems to be a light being shined on, you know, hate speech that's, if it's part of an activism effort on, you know, a progressive or left, left-leaning organization, like, like the, many of the pro-Palestine groups seem to be, then some circles seem to condone hate speech. But if it's, you know, if it's previously just a conservative speaker talking on, you know, much lighter-hearted, you know, everyday social issues, then they, they have been condemned for being hateful, which is very, very political, it seems, in the way some speeches deemed hateful and some is not. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, commenter. And we do not have any other hands up in Zoom, so we'll go to those here in the audience today. If you'd like to speak on the consent calendar, please come forward. Let us know which item you're speaking on. Welcome.
Was this only on consent or?
It's only on consent.
I'm sorry.
That'll be next. The public comment on non-agenda items is right after this. Welcome, commenter.
Well, I met Vesta today for the first time. She has a very enduring quality. She showed up early for the meeting. And for those of you who appreciate, I think maybe it's a little bit of an autistic thing, but we like being punctual, we like other people to be punctual. She did ride the elevator down to the basement, I think, so. I think that's always a good thing when you're waiting to do something interesting. I really wish you would, folks would get rid of the elevator and put in an escalator so that those of us who are like kids when we're bored can ride up and down the escalator instead. She's to find out, and as you all know, you know, my biggest thing is supporting the children, you know, the older adults and the pets, and this is what she's done. So I would like to personally thank her for this, and I will keep this down to, I did have something else on the hate speech, so I'll go a little bit more. The city of Blue Lake recently had some people on Zoom call in.
She has a very enduring quality. She showed up early for the meeting. And for those of you who appreciate, I think maybe it's a little bit of an autistic thing, but we like being punctual, we like other people to be punctual. She did ride the elevator down to the basement, I think, so I think that's always a good thing when you're waiting to do something interesting. I really wish you would, folks, would get rid of the elevator and put in an escalator so that those of us who are like kids when we're bored can ride up and down the escalator instead. She's defined, and as you all know, you know, my biggest thing is supporting the children, you know, the older adults and the pets, and this is what she's done. So I would like to personally thank her for this, and I will keep this down to, I did have something else on the hate speech, so I'll go a little bit more. The city of Blue Lake recently had some people on Zoom call in and engage in this and using foul language, and from out of the area, I guess there's a group of people around who are just calling to these different municipalities. And unfortunately, it sounds like the city of Blue Lake, instead of trying to eliminate this, is going to try and maybe eliminate Zoom in its entirety, which all of us appreciate you having, and we hope they won't do that. That's a knee-jerk reaction. And then also cutting public comment down to two minutes, which I totally condone when appropriate, but this kind of knee-jerk reaction in the city of Blue Lake would be detrimental to public participation. I, again, want to shout out for the way you guys manage your meeting and allow us to participate, which is something that all of us value here. So again, thank you for her fine service and the opportunity to speak today.
Thank you, commenter. And next.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, the board, county staff, CAO. My name is Vernon Price. I'd like to speak on item number six of the agenda, Department of Health and Human Services' Behavioral Health Bridge Housing Program. I ask, my ask today is to continue through with the recommendation, number four, that we approve attached supplemental budget request in the amount of $1,128,105 for the Department of Health and Human Services' Social Services Budget Unit. That would be my request to go with county staff's recommendation that this is going to be helping a lot of people get off the streets and stay off the streets. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Vernon. I still owe you a letter as well, as you know.
Thank you.
Next, public comment on the consent calendar. And seeing nobody else coming forward, we'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Bushnell.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second. So we have a motion by Supervisor Bushnell and a second by Supervisor Wilson to approve the consent calendar. Any further discussion? Seeing none, can we, do we have our voting tabs? If not, okay. No, it's not.
Okay, I'll do a roll call then.
Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Bone?
Yep.
And Chairman Drone?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much. And now we'll go to public comment on non-agenda items, and this is the opportunity I start with Zoom and see if there's any comments there. And there is one hand up there, and that is 0116. So we'll take that comment first, and then we'll come to those here in the audience. Welcome.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, Ash Teeter Gins, Lost Coast, Populist.com. First, I just want to say Merry Christmas or Happy Holidays, whichever you take it. I want to say that, you know, we're all Americans, we're all in this together, and though we may not all realize it, we all face a global threat looking to transform the way we live. These globalist groups, much like, and if you're familiar with the Georgia Guidestones, they have a goal, you know, they want to reduce the population. And like, I think of 500 million, is that what it is? Significantly less, like, you know, killing off 90% of people is pretty much what they want to do. You might ask why they want to do this. Well, you look at, you know, the robotics that we see these days, you know, they pretty much have robots that can do a lot of things that humans do, so they see, you know, a lot of the surf class, as many of us are, to be, you know, seemingly irrelevant. And, you know, the moving society in a way, just little shifts, you know, here and there, you know, hurting us all in the cities, smart cities, as they will, you know, the ultimate control with all the digital stuff we have. But yeah, it's an end goal, and you might ask, why do these people do this? Well, and it seems like, you know, they got distance from spirituality or God, so that they're afraid of dying. They want to merge with this technology, but they almost have distanced themselves from humanity. They don't even see themselves as humans anymore. They're anti-humans. That's why they want to kill people off. You look at how many, you know, food processing plants have just burned to the ground, like steel structures burned to the ground, like hundreds? It's not a coincidence, and it's, I don't know what any single person can really do about it, but spread awareness about it, that it's happening and that we're all on the same side because we're all humans and we're all, you know, but I imagine all of you want your children to live a happy, healthy future, just like I do. But I don't know exactly what you can do about it, but just acknowledge that it is happening. I mean, there are these globalist people, the WES, the Schwabs, the Bill Gates out there, they want to, in the midst of a homeless crisis, Bill Gates wants to cut down and bury
Thirty seconds.
like thousands of acres of trees instead of build houses for homeless people. That is how anti-human, how disassociating these people are. So I wanted, I don't know what you can do about it, but talk about it and acknowledge that it's there. But anyways, best wishes to y'all and happy holidays. Thank you.
Thank you, commenter. And that appears to be all the hands in Zoom, so we'll go to those here in the audience today, please. Welcome. You've got three minutes.
Thank you very much for the three minutes. Good morning, supervisors. My name is James Chaffey. One of the things that the U.S. Constitution guarantees to everyone is due process of law. It's found in the Fourteenth and the Fifth Amendments. Actually, the term "due process" comes from the first codification of the Magna Carta in 1354. In 1977, the U.S. Supreme Court decided that everyone meant that even inmates in prisons had to be provided with access to law libraries so that they could educate themselves, that access to the law to be meaningful meant that you had to be able to educate yourself about your case. The state of California was not sleeping on its laurels. In 1941, the state of California instituted a system of county law libraries supported by local fees and taxes and guaranteed that every resident of the county where a law library was created had access to that library. Now, on a scale of civil rights, what's lower, a resident of Humboldt County or an inmate in prison? The answer, of course, is a resident of Humboldt County. Every county in California does that except Humboldt. Humboldt requires appointments to get into the library, and then they grant no appointments. They don't grant appointments to you, they don't grant appointments to me. As near as I can tell, they don't grant appointments to anyone. As I say, this is supported by local taxes, and in fact, if you look at the tax rates, there's, we are fourth in the level of taxing support. Only Santa Barbara, San Francisco, and Sacramento pay more for their law library. In fact, not having access to the library means that you don't have access to the law. And to tell someone that they don't have access to law is telling them that they are both hopeless and helpless. And to tell somebody that they're in that condition because they're a resident of Humboldt County is a very heavy thing to tell someone. Thank you very much.
Thank you, commenter. And next. Welcome.
Chairman Drone, members of the board, good morning. My name is Glenn Zeimer. Last week in my comments to your board, I made a mistake. In the latter portion of my comments, I misspoke and used the term professional malfeasance incorrectly. The term has a very distinct definition and is, in fact, a very strong allegation, one which I did not intend to convey. Words matter, specifically those delivered in a public forum such as this one, and since my comments were delivered in this forum, it seems appropriate that I correct the record and apologize to the staff, specifically Mr. Quincy, for my error. I am sincerely sorry for this error on my part, and I will seek to be more accurate and precise in my use of language in the future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, commenter. And next. Welcome.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors. Gordon Clattworthy running for First District Supervisor. In my talks with the community, and this is not about the agenda item coming up, but I have talked about with the community some of the problems with some of the cannabis grows throughout the county in regards to crime. And I think it's probably a good idea if we look back at who we are giving access to these farms to. I think maybe restricting people working on the farms who have a background of violent histories or have been arrested multiple times maybe shouldn't be allowed to work on these farms or even be registered agents for these farms or the landowners for these farms. I think that'll do a lot to cut back on the amount of crime that apparently has been perpetrated at some of these farms. So that's all I wanted to bring up. I've got an award ceremony at the Coast Guard base that I'm going to go to next, and a lot of people are doing the Coast Guard Auxiliary. It's a volunteer program, and we need more people to participate, so I'm going to take off.
Thank you very much, commenter. And next. Welcome.
Kent Sawatsky, what I do is I try and do deals, put things together that are to the benefit of the citizens of Humboldt County. It's one of the things. So I, the other day, I was going to get some information from Alicia Hayes. I went in, and she had some meeting and stuff, and I don't know whether, I didn't get back to her, so that's my fault. I wanted to fact-check a few things, but my understanding is, if I recall correctly, the Board of Supervisors have approximately $3 million carryover Measure Z money that could be spent. One reason this exists is the county ceased to fund using Measure Z funds, a one-half sheriff's deputy for both Trinidad and Blue Lake, I think it was two years ago or thereabouts. So in other words, that money was not spent by the county for Measure Z. My opinion is, there should have been something spent for these people out there, for the two communities. I have been speaking with Eli, who's a fantastic person, the city manager over in Trinidad, and about possibly getting a credit, whatever you guys can do out of that money, for our current sheriff's contract from the $3 million carryover, which, again, would have been spent for these two cities had we continued that policy. As it is now, Trinidad and Blue Lake get no direct benefit from Measure Z. I'm talking direct benefit. We all get ancillary benefits. A one-half sales tax that the citizens of those municipalities pay at retail establishments in Humboldt County online. And I think this is a gripe throughout the county, that Measure Z, after it was passed with Measure O, the sunset went away, that a lot of the money ended up not going to the municipalities anymore. I said if we are able to get Sheriff Billy to back using some of these one-time funds to allow Trinidad and Blue Lake to seek other long-term funding, I would like you guys to be the heroes up here rather than the zeros and consider this when this comes before you as far as this goes. In my opinion, this equity will allow good faith should the county attempt to put a road tax, et cetera, on the ballot in November, and would go a long ways toward the municipalities not repealing or replacing Measure Z in November with a tax where they share the wealth based upon what their citizens pay in. And this is something that I think you should seriously consider could possibly happen, and it would help, I think, everybody out there if there was a little more giving, and this is one chance to give to these two small cities, which are disadvantaged foreign law enforcement. That would be appreciated if you folks would reach out and work with, specifically with Eli. Elise Scafani is really good on the Blue Lake City Council. She seems to be up to speed on this, and so maybe this is a deal we could put together that would be in all our best interest. The Blue Lake and Trinidad really would like to see our public health, safety, and welfare done on an equitable basis. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, commenter. And anybody else here today wishing to speak on the non-agenda items? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board and our agenda and continue to move along. We do have a time set at 10 o'clock. I think it's going to be a pretty long, could be a couple-hour effort, so I would recommend that we go ahead and jump to item number I-1, which is our board meeting calendar, and then we'll take a brief break before we go into a long public hearing, if that sounds good for the rest of the board. All right, so item I-1 and the calendar. CAO Hayes, anything to present on this?
Thank you, Chairman Drone. This is the calendar that comes before your board to establish the meeting schedule for next year. Just a couple items that your board may wish to discuss. I have spoke individually with each of you, potentially exploring a bi-weekly calendar. Given some challenges we've had at the end of the year with board breaks, I opted not to present a calendar that reduced the number of meetings. However, should your board wish to explore that, we can return with modifications next week. Also, your staff have indicated that your board might be interested in swapping out the Thanksgiving week for the week of November 12th, that follows a Monday holiday, which typically we would go dark after that, but that's in the easy accommodation we could make if your board would like. And then just to put on your radar, I will not be present for the meeting of March 5th. I have a family obligation that day, so I'm just throwing that one out there. But that is it for your board's discussion. To approve or modify the calendar as you see fit.
Great. Thank you, CAO Hayes. And so if I heard you correctly and looking at the list, in the past, we used to not have a meeting on a Tuesday following a holiday, but also on the fifth Tuesday of the month. But that's not in here, and I think you were saying you're trying to maintain as many board meeting days as possible, otherwise we end up with these seven o'clock in the evening agendas. Is that correct? So this does not include, so the fifth Tuesdays are included here as board meetings? They're not excluded?
No, only on rare occasions, for instance, January, we do meet on the fifth Tuesday because we have two dark days in January, and so we meet on the fifth so that you're not dark the majority of January.
But the rest of the fifth Tuesdays are included as, they're not excluded here, the fifth Tuesdays?
They are excluded.
No, they're not.
They're not? I don't see them listed.
You have all fifth Tuesdays as meetings?
Yes.
Except for April 30th, which was listed as one.
No, it says regular board meeting.
We're meeting on April.
April 30th, which is a fifth Tuesday.
Yeah, so that one is.
And then it shows the week, the week.
Yes.
So it's two meetings and a board break, which is different.
Yeah. You're correct, Supervisor.
Okay. So, yeah, Supervisor Bone, and then Bushnell.
And I'd like to honor our staff, and the problem with the staff at that big break is that if we meet the day after Veterans Day and then, because what happens is they have to do the meeting, the agenda from CSAC. That is the one annual time of year that the COB has their annual meeting, and they all get together. I know they have Law Week this week, so they can keep us in line. So if you look at the CSAC date, they would appreciate that Tuesday, because we've got a pretty, we've got quite a few breaks, so that's what they would request. The way I understand it, isn't that right, Elise, CAO Hayes? And then the other thing is about going every other week? I think we've got like 20 Tuesdays off. We're darn near every other week now when there's, you know, so I think we're okay on that, because otherwise we end up with these meetings with appeals. And it's not, I know we get up here and everyone's like, oh my God, I've worked eight hours. I mean, that's what we do. If we were driving a truck, we'd have to work 12, so, and have to pay attention. So I would just as soon have as many meetings as possible, because the problem, the problem is, is it's not just about us. It's about the 135,000 people that have, the ones that have appeals, that needs, they need to get building permits, they need, DHHS needs to get funding. I mean, this doesn't throw in the nine special meetings we had this last year, I believe it was, that something comes up because we didn't have a meeting, so we have to have a special meeting, so I don't know if we accomplished anything or not. So if we can accommodate our staff, I kind of just, I'm pretty good with the way it sits right now.
Okay, and Supervisor Bushnell?
So, speaking to the November meeting as well, so when I was talking with
So speaking to the November meeting as well, so when I was talking with the clerks, they said that possibly, and this would affect also county department heads, but maybe they could publish on Thursday, the 7th. Because I know the one issue with this, with you probably, CAO, is you like to meet with department, with us on Mondays. So then that would maybe, if we had questions about the agenda, we could talk with you on Friday, the 8th, and then have the meeting on the 12th, take the 19th off, or no, excuse me, take the 26th off. And I think they would make that commitment, if the department heads could make that commitment as well, to get their stuff in a little bit early so that we could have that week of Thanksgiving off. And then also, I was wondering if, because traditionally we've had the 5th Tuesday off and not had the, it looks like we have like two meetings and a board break, a lot of board breaks. And so I'm wondering if you spoke with department heads at all, how they're feeling about this, especially the larger departments that, like DHHS, that really have a lot of items that come through, and what those thoughts are?
One point of clarification on the 5th Tuesday, there is, in the recommendations, the April, the April 5th Tuesday would be proposed as a cancel, but the calendar actually reflects it as in session. So that would be a canceled 5th Tuesday.
So there would only be two meetings that month then?
Correct, yeah. And no, this was not circulated through the department heads. This follows the typical schedule that your board adheres to.
I mean, do you foresee, you know, it seems to me that the, with just having two meetings a month, that there would, the meetings would be very large, which would be okay with me. However, I would be concerned with department heads being able to get items through and also appeals. You know, it would be a lot of, could be a lot of appeals in a day. So it really does limit quite a few months to just two meetings. And so I would be concerned with that. And I guess three meetings on average. Or, I don't know, every other month it looks like two, three, two, three. So I would just be concerned without getting comment from the department heads on how they feel about that and their items that need to come through.
Yeah, you do have some of your frequent flyers, I'll call them, in the audience, your Health and Human Services Director and your Planning Director, I think are some of your more...
Well, if I could ask...
Works is also here, so they might be able to provide feedback.
Well, if I could ask a question, have we considered having a meeting, like, it would add a meeting, but just four appeals possibly? And then, I don't know how that would work, but, I don't know, just thoughts?
Yeah, sure, totally up to your board's discretion to add or remove as you see fit.
Okay. Yeah, I know in 2024, there's actually four months with five Tuesdays, January 30th, April 30th, October 29th, and December 31st. And yes, April 30th is listed here as a 5th Tuesday to not have a meeting, whereas January 30th, October 29th, and December are not listed. December 31st is also listed as a Tuesday to not have a meeting. So two out of the four 5th Tuesdays are in this proposed calendar to not have a meeting. Supervisor Arroyo?
I was just going to say that I support the request that I've also heard from some staff about Thanksgiving being a canceled week and having the meeting the week of Veterans' Day, November 12th. I know folks often end up traveling long distances for Thanksgiving and would appreciate having that week canceled instead.
Okay, so yeah, Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, and besides that, and next year for like planning and building appeals, those will generally be in the morning next year. Having staff sit around all day, all morning, numerous times, and then not coming in, then having to leave at noon to come back at 2:00, I think disrupts our office when it's, so those will be to let people know unless, it's an impossibility, we will be having these appeals in the morning.
Thanks for that. And so at this point, Supervisor Wilson?
Yeah, you can add me to the list with relationship to the moving the meeting from the 26th to the 12th of November. I think if it's just a one-off in terms of having one of these Tuesdays following a Monday holiday, I think we can adapt to that and it won't be super disruptive. And also, it's not just, yeah, I mean, just what I, there are many staff that have kids that are off that week, and so it's great to allow for that flexibility, for sure. That's all I have with relationship to that. And I do think that we could, if needed, and I agree with Supervisor Bushnell, if we needed to create special meetings with relationship to, sorry, someone just pointed out the other day that I say "with relationship" a lot, so I'm going to have, I'm going to pull that back. So if you, there's like a buzzer, you can just get me. So, but I want to, I want to say that, it's like my "uh," right? Okay, so what I'm trying to say is that I do think that we have the potential to do that. I think, now I'm going to use "uh," we should do that more if we can, if we really need to. If there's a stack of appeals or something like that, that we can make a special meeting, I think it's functional. I think it's important, some of those can be very controversial, they really can take a lot of our time and energy and, you know, just our emotional, intellectual space, we can do those in chunks. And I think it would be, we'd make better decisions. I think the discussions would go better as well, so.
Okay, Supervisor Bushnell, and then we're going to go to public comment?
Yeah, also just on the appeal items, and I do like what Supervisor Bones said, having them in the morning. But we also have a community that travel distance to make comment on those and also the, you know, the opponents and appellants. And so that, keeping that in mind too. So either would work for me, having them in the morning is very nice for those folks and for staff. And then also, if we were to do a special meeting just for appeals, then folks that are traveling in would know that we could time-set them as well, you know, in order. So I just think, you know, our county is very large, and so that would be accommodating them, the general public as well.
Thank you for those comments. And so Supervisor Arroyo?
Are you ready for a motion, Supervisor Drone?
No, we're going to go to the public comment first.
All right. I would just like to note, you know, I think there's, historically, there's been a time identified for special meetings that's like a Thursday, oh, it's Monday? Okay, Monday afternoons or Monday mornings seem like they're the most clear for the most of us with respect to, that's mine, the other boards and commissions that we serve on.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. So we'll go to public comment, and I don't have any hands up in the Zoom, so I will go to those here in the audience today. Welcome, and you've got three minutes on this item.
Kent Sawatsky, I do not have my crib notes in front of me on this topic. In the future, it'd be pretty nice if you had it up on the board exactly what the schedule is so that when you're speaking of things, we could relate to your potential changes. Meetings need to have a consistent flow. I personally think that you should have, no matter what, three meetings a month. I can't see any reason why that couldn't be done. It may not be convenient for staff to do certain things when they're away, but with this day and age and technology, the ability to communicate through the cloud there, I don't think that should be an implement. So many people are working strictly not at the job anymore. And the public would appreciate, like you say, having very few really long meetings. So spreading them out is great. Just so you know, and you could verify this through John Ford, I'm not aware of a single cannabis permit coming up for consideration, maybe one at the most, in your zoning administration or your planning commission meeting scheduled this next time. In other words, this is drying up. And as soon as that dries up, the appeals dry up because they have a certain amount of time to bring these appeals forward. And so with far, it used to be like maybe 13 permits we're going through at one time. That increases your odds of having appeals, which is going to be minimized now. So hopefully that is a problem that will go away for you. They are long and it's a long process. Appreciate the time you sit through these long hearings. It's no fun for anybody. So anyway, again, I think you may find that the public would be, is happy. I think Rex said you have maybe 20 meetings that you don't have or 20 times off. I think it was closer to 34, if I remember my crib notes. So that'd be 18, 18 weeks where you don't have the meetings on scheduled as far as the Tuesdays go, unless it's a leap year or something. Anyway, I applaud you thinking about this and considering the need for your staff and your other people to move things through in an even manner. And I think the three meetings a month kind of minimum would probably facilitate that and let everybody know, again, well in advance so they can plan their schedules and get their things on your agenda. Thank you for having me speak.
Thank you, commenter. And Clerk of the Board Kathy Hayes, welcome.
Good morning. I just, a point of clarification as it relates to board members' schedules and meetings. The current ordinance in place does allow for a regularly scheduled meeting on Monday afternoons at 1:30 as well as Tuesdays at 9:00 a.m. So just as an option for your board, should you choose to schedule separate meetings for appeal hearings that you anticipate may be fairly long, Mondays at 1:30 would be a regular meeting that you could schedule, and if it works in your calendar, to accommodate those particular meetings. The other comment that I have as it relates to the schedule overall is our goal has always been to try to not be down more than two meetings, two weeks a month. So some of the reason for moving things around, adding 5th Tuesdays, is based upon trying to keep the schedule so the board is meeting not less than two weeks down and continuing forward to accommodate departments' needs. So just wanted to put that out there, that that's really kind of why things look a little... There are some other scheduled conferences that most of you attend that do affect this schedule, and those are reflected here. But just wanted to kind of clarify that we do have the option of 1:30 on Monday if special meetings are needed, or if a regular meeting is needed for appeal hearings.
Thank you so much for that clarification. Appreciate that. And it looks like that's it for our public comment, so we'll bring it back to the board. Supervisor Bushnell?
So I would like to make a motion that for the November calendar, that we, I'm getting there, thank you, that we cancel the board meeting the week of the 26th and that we have a board meeting the week of the 12th. Excuse, yeah, the 12th, and that we try to have our staff get all the agenda items in a little bit early so that we can publish on the Thursday, so that we could have conversations with the CAO on Friday, the 8th if we need to do so. And then I also, I don't think we need to do the board breaks. I would just like to do the regular schedule. I don't, do I need to go by month by month?
Need to know the specifics.
Okay, the specifics, so...
Right now, we have, you're saying, I have a meeting on the 12th, not on the 26th of November?
So I, I'll do it, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh huh. So January would be fine, and then February would be fine. So on March 19th, we have a board break. I would propose that we have a meeting that day. And also...
Point of clarification on that one, that is the week of the Pacific Offshore Wind Conference. And we have two, four of you are on ad-hocs, and last year, we actually held a specific conversation about canceling that so that you can attend.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't see that. It's not written on the calendar. So I guess the November is just the change I would make.
The agenda itself has it.
I know, I'm on the calendar portion, so it's, yeah, thank you. So I, my motion would be just to change the November meeting.
Okay, that simplifies. And first, is there a second?
I'll second, but I do have a point of clarification.
Supervisor Bone and then Supervisor Arroyo?
And I, I don't want to put a burden on our CAO, but in her making herself available to us, if there's something you need to talk on the, before the 12th meeting, I'm sure she will be fully available on that Saturday, Sunday, or Monday. Don't abuse it. But if there's something standing out that you need an answer for, I'm sure she can get you an answer. She may not be able to follow up with department heads, but again, department heads, they all get that administrative time off because they do have to work overtime and weekends. So I'm sure they will be very available to you if it's something pertaining to their department. They always have been for me forever.
Okay, Supervisor Arroyo?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, was the intent to also eliminate one of the board breaks in July and early August? Those are the ones that, I mean, I'm not necessarily saying that's my suggestion, but if the intent was to minimize those, those are the ones that I think we take as a two-week summer vacation.
Yeah, and thank you for, I'm pulling up both. So yes, it would be, that would be my motion.
Okay. I want to just note that I already know I will miss a board meeting, potentially two, one for a family obligation and one for a professional conference. And I just really appreciate that when that does need to happen, I think, you know, everyone has other things to balance. We all serve on a lot of boards and commissions and go to a lot of, you know, professional conferences and have families. So when that does need to happen, I appreciate that we're able to accommodate that and, you know, work together with the board chair to address that and the CAO. But I also really appreciate when there's not grief about it. So I would just like to ask that, you know, as we're, as we're going through the year, we be, have a little grace towards each other when it comes to our, balancing our schedules. But I would say that entire calendar as proposed sounds fine to me.
So I'll clarify the motion for, so it would be the November, moving the November date, you have that right? And then also canceling the board break in July and August. Is that right? Yeah.
What?
If that was your intention to cancel or eliminate some or all of the board breaks, then I just...
So we have, we have a normal break in July and August, but we've added breaks throughout.
Sure.
And so how is the board, Mike, you have a scowl.
I was just wondering.
Yeah.
Let's, one at a time here, please.
Yeah, so I just, we have a lot of added breaks that we added in to this new calendar. And so what is, how is the board feeling about that? Supervisor Bone made a comment that he would like to not have eliminated meetings. There is a lot of eliminated meetings in here that are more board breaks, so that's what I'm asking.
I think it would be nice to have one or the other of those weeks. I don't think, I don't personally need two weeks back-to-back, but, you know, because there are a lot of other times, but I would like to, you know, I'd just like us to determine that now so that we can plan our summers.
Yeah, and so I plan eight months ahead.
Right, so before the motion goes forward, how is the board feeling?
So you're recommending beyond the November switch that the July 30th, that we have a meeting rather than a break, and August 6th, that we have a meeting rather than a break?
I'm asking the board.
I understand. Yeah. So that's, how is the secondor feel about that? We'll start there.
We can have a conversation.
Yes, we can have a conversation, but first I want to start with the secondor because that's a proposed amendment to your motion.
I don't think I, oh, I did, I was the secondor.
Yes, you are.
Sorry, I'm losing track. I would, I would ask that we consider keeping one of those weeks as a break.
Okay, so your second has been withdrawn?
No, that's fine. I'm fine with one of them.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, and we're having a discussion, and that's good. So Supervisor Wilson, your thoughts?
I particularly like having two weeks in the summer at some point. I think a lot of staff does as well. I'm just saying it's like, it's nice to be able to actually take a chunk of time with the family and do something. Once a year in the summer is a nice time to do that. So it's been something that's, this board has done for many, many years. I think it's a weird, I feel like we're like, I don't know, it's just strange to me. The July 16th one is the one I would prefer to have as a meeting as opposed to the July 30th, if that's where we're going with this. So that way we can have a good chunk of, series of meetings and have a decent break and actually take some time. I think it's a reasonable. The June 18th one, I think what we've seen happen in the past with Juneteenth being in the middle of the week, we see a lot of staff take... in the middle of the week, we see a lot of staff take that week off. It has happened. People begin, it's summertime, one of those things. I'm just putting it out there. Well, it's, I don't see a problem with that. The April 16th, I think is some, it seems like a fine time to have a meeting to me. I say March 19th? I don't know. I actually kind of liked the schedule the way it was, but I don't feel like this is going to back us up too much. I do believe we have a relief valve with the special meetings on Mondays. But that's just me. I just really, I didn't, I was not expecting this detailed of a conversation with relationship to our summer schedules. But yeah, that has been very helpful for me and for the health of my family to have two weeks off in the summer to go do something. So that's just me.
Okay, thank you. And I'll just say my comment that I'm fine with the November switch, but I would like to maintain the summer break July 30th and August 6th as well. Supervisor Bone?
Yeah, the July, that's the NACO Annual Conference too, by the way. So the July 16th is right in the middle of that. And like I said, I, I'm sorry if you have, I don't know, grief about missing meetings. I'm pretty, the only thing we have to do is Tuesday, show up to meetings. That's the only job we have. So in all honesty, that's the only, you know, we have a lot more to do, but we need to show up to the meetings. And I did miss a meeting this year when I had to go back for NACO. So I'll do whatever. Two weeks is actually almost three weeks. It's because the gap and everything. But I don't have a problem. I just miss you. I just miss you guys because I show up every day and I miss you guys all being gone. No. But I, the November one was the only one I worried about was getting our schedule out and everything else. And then the rest of it, I would, you know, we didn't have very much public comment today. So I don't know if this rises to the level where they're going to get all witty on this. So I think what we're doing, and we can always add if we get backed up, or we've always been able in the 11 years or so that, you know, we've always been able to add and accommodate. I don't know, I'd love to have the comparison. How many meetings did we have calendar year last year and how many meetings are planned for calendar year this year? Did you do a comparison?
I didn't compare.
And it may be in here, but I didn't see it.
Yeah, I just.
It's fairly comparable to last year's schedule.
I think by and large, yeah. Like I said, your board brought forward a specific item to cancel the meeting to go to the Pacific Offshore Wind. Last year it was in May instead of in March.
But we've also added two, we've added two fifth Tuesdays too. So I'm thinking we're pretty close and, you know, except for a couple of meetings, we've been pretty well organized. But I mean, I don't want to hold, I don't want to hold the business of the community and the county up while we worry about if we're having enough time off. I don't mind having them every Tuesday. But so I, the November one is, I think for staff, that's, you know, staff doesn't make many requests. I think that needs to be honored. So I appreciate that. Everything else I know, and I do know, I've worked with Mike for six years. I know Mike, Mike does like to take his family away. He's running out of time to do that probably unless he starts taking kids and grandkids and everything. So I know that. But I like to spend time with mine too.
So the motion would be if it's all right with the secondor to change the November dates and to have the rest of the calendar remain the same. Sounds great.
I like that simplified back to the original motion. And I do think work-life balances are important. And I will note that this year in 2023, we only had two meetings that went past 5 o'clock in the evening. And if we need, as Clerk of the Board Kathy Hayes said, we can add a Monday meeting if we're seeing an overly packed agenda in the future. So we have a simplified motion, and that is simply to change the November date to meet on 11/12 and not on 11/26. So with that, we've had public comment. We'll go ahead. And do we have voting tabs? I don't know if mine came up or not.
I can take a roll call, Chair.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and take the roll call, please?
Okay, we'll start with you.
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
I probably just need to log in and log out.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
And Supervisor Bone. Thank you. Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, great. And we do have a time set at 10:10. And silly me thinking we could do the calendar in 10 minutes. But here we are. So should we go ahead and do the presentation and hear from the appellant and then take a break? Seems how it's really only an hour since we started the meeting. I would suggest we ought to go ahead and do that. We'll take a break after the presentation from Director, from the department as well as the appellant. Then we'll take a break and come back for public comment. But we get it all done here this morning. So welcome Director Ford and staff.
Thank you, Chair Madrow, members of the Board of Supervisors, John Ford, Cliff Johnson, and Michael Holtermann to present the appeal and the conditional use permit for the Big River Farms application. Sorry, as we get adjusted here a little bit, the Big River Farms requested a 22,000 square foot approval.
Actually, excuse me, Director Ford. Before we jump in, I think it's appropriate we do ex parte communication. And as a board, being that this is a de novo from the Planning Commission, so I'll start out. I've had no contact with the applicant or the department or anybody in relation to this. Anytime recently, although I did have an email exchange with Rod Silva about four years ago, five years ago in 2019, very brief, one sentence comment that is in the record under public comment. So any other board members? Yes, Supervisor Bushnell?
I don't think it's ex parte, but I also had communication with members of my community. This appeal is in my district. So I spoke with three members of the community and I also spoke with Director Ford. And that is all.
Great. Thank you for that. And Supervisor Bone?
I got a phone call after, after the meeting from my Planning Commissioner just to let him know why he voted the way he did. I don't know if that's ex parte because since he's not involved in it.
Yes, I believe any communications outside of the hearing today are considered ex parte. And talking to County Council, I don't think it's necessarily a requirement, but I've seen it done often. I just thought it was appropriate. So with that, we'll go ahead and start the presentation. Thank you for that.
Thanks. Thank you, Chair. So in a moment, Mr. Holtermann will present the nature of the project and the appeal. But before he does, I just want to make a couple of points. The first one is the board understands is that a decision to approve or deny a land use application must be informed by findings to support the action. And those findings must be supported by facts that are in the record. That's called evidence. And the facts must be related to the application under consideration. The Planning Commission struggled with this application. It was ultimately denied with a 4-3 vote. In coming to that action, the findings and the evidence were not well founded. And as a result, the Planning and Building Department is supporting the appeal. This is, as was mentioned by the Chair, the de novo hearing, meaning that the Board of Supervisors can approve or deny this application. A resolution is provided for the board this morning to approve the appeal and approve the conditional use permit. If you, as the board, choose to take a different action, staff would request that you continue this item to allow findings to be prepared in response to the information and evidence that the board finds significant. Mr. Holtermann will now provide an overview of the project and the appeal.
So just a clarification, we had, this is a continuation of the public hearing from a week ago, I believe it was. Do I need to reopen the public hearing? No, it's still open, basically. Okay, just for that clarification. Thank you. Okay.
Good morning. My name is Michael Holtermann. I'm the assigned planner for the Big River Farm Appeal. It's record number PLN-2023-18698. So first, we're going to move into the project location. Here you can see the parcel highlighted in blue. It's in relation to the Whitethorne and Shelter Cove area, also highlighted in green are public lands. That's going to be important moving forward because the applicant is applying for a special permit for a setback reduction to public lands. Next, we'll have a brief project overview. So the application is for 22,000 square feet of outdoor light deprivation cannabis cultivation with 2,190 square feet of ancillary nursery space. The cultivation area verification on file does indicate that there was pre-existing mixed light cultivation on the property. And in line with that, the original application was for 22,000 square feet of mixed light cultivation. But the applicant has altered their proposal to outdoor light deprivation cultivation in an effort to reduce environmental impacts. Processing activities on site include drying and curing only in an existing garage or storage shed, and all further trimming and packaging is to occur off-site at a licensed third-party processing facility. The water source for the project is a groundwater well supplemented by rain catchment. Currently, there's a total of 86,600 gallons of hard tank storage on site. The applicant has secured grant funding for an additional 50,000 gallons of storage tanks for a total of 136,600 gallons. The water use is projected at 219,000 gallons annually or 9.9 gallons per square foot per year. And two conditions that staff wanted to point out in relation to water use are conditions A20 and A21. Condition A20 requires an annual pump test be performed by a qualified professional to evaluate drawdown of the well. And condition A21 requires the applicant to install a water meter to track irrigation use separate from domestic use and furnish records during or prior to annual inspections. Moving forward, we'll go into the energy source and the special permit. So the energy source is PG&E power, although the applicant does have an emergency backup generator on site in the event of a power outage. Another condition that staff wanted to bring to the attention of the board was condition A13, which does require a noise containment structure for the generator, a 50-decibel noise limit, and verification of compliance with these standards prior to any use of the generator. Regarding the public lands setback, the applicant currently has a greenhouse approximately 30 feet from the property line and has proposed to relocate that. It would, after relocation, be approximately 170 feet away. The applicant has also proposed to replant, or not replant, rather, but plant trees along the southern property line, approximately 1.1 acres, to increase the buffer to sensitive habitat and sensitive species. As was discussed previously, the applicant has altered their project proposal to shift from mixed light to light deprivation and will be required to adhere to noise limits. So here we have the site plan. This is kind of a zoomed-in version. It shows cultivation areas, compost sites, nursery space, water storage, harvest storage. There's the full map attached with the staff report, but we did want to highlight some things that are going to be moving around that won't necessarily match with the original baseline conditions. And that's highlighted in this slide here. So in the bottom right, the red rectangle is highlighting the cultivation space that is proposed to be relocated. So that will be completely removed. And the other two red rectangles are highlighting areas where the cultivation will be relocated. In the upper left, the blue rectangle is the nursery space that the applicant is proposing, that's 2,190 square feet. And the text in the bottom right that's highlighted in the green rectangle is pointing to sort of an oblong oval with the dashed line there. That's the 1.1 acres of hardwood that the applicant is proposing to stock to increase the buffer to sensitive habitat areas. So as Director Ford had said, the application was denied at the Planning Commission. So we're going to briefly go through the findings and evidence. The finding was that the proposed cannabis operation would be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare and is in conflict with the general plan. There are four evidence items in relation to this finding. The first evidence item A being that public comments have been received indicating criminal and dangerous activity have occurred and continue to occur on site, including a gunfight on the subject property on or around November 2018. Evidence item B is that there's no evidence presented that the approval of this use would not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. Evidence item C is the manner in which the site had been graded had the potential for sedimentation. And the construction of, I should say, a greenhouse over the property line onto BLM property shows a past practice of not complying with regulations. And finally, evidence item D, the BLM property to the south is potential habitat for the northern spotted owl and the general plan calls for the protection of listed species. So we'll go through these one by one. First was the allegations of criminal and dangerous activity. After multiple attempts to reach out to the sheriff's office, no pertinent information was received. The sheriff's office said they are aware of ongoing organized criminal activity in the area. However, we're unable to comment on any ongoing investigations. To the knowledge of the Planning Department, and as was pointed out by the appellant in their justification, there have been no charges filed, warrants for arrest, or convictions for the alleged gunfight or any other criminal activity in association with the cannabis operation. There does not appear to be any evidence that the alleged gunfight was connected to the applicant or the cannabis operation. And then as a note, the use of firearms is not uncommon in rural areas for hunting or recreational use. And given that information, it's very difficult, if not impossible, for the Planning Department to verify the source of any alleged gunshots. And then another point that the appellant did point out in their justification was the applicant had submitted metric manifests from 2019 to 2022, which appeared to show the legal sale of cannabis products. Moving forward to evidence item B, the project does comply with all relevant sections of the CMMLO. And as the appellant pointed out, all technical information typically associated with cannabis applications has been submitted. The only evidence to the contrary that the Planning Department has is unverified allegations of criminal activity. Evidence item C was, had to do with sedimentation and history of noncompliance. So it's difficult to determine whether sedimentation in the area is attributable solely to the cannabis development, as was noted in the staff report. That being said, information on file does indicate that the site can be managed to protect water quality and correct any sedimentation issues. Again, as was pointed out by the appellant, the applicant has prepared a WRPP, Water Resources Protection Plan, and is enrolled with the State Water Resources Control Board and will be required to prepare a site management plan as well. As part of their enrollment under the State Water Board, the state may require a sedimentation and erosion control plan if they determine that the site management plan does not cover that in enough detail. So that would be in addition to the site management plan. But that is at the discretion of the State Water Board. As well, the applicant would be required to permit all the grading that has occurred through the Building Department. And then regarding a history of noncompliance, the appellant is correct that all pre-existing applications demonstrate a history of noncompliance as cultivation of cannabis prior to the adoption of the ordinance is, or at the time was not compliant with state or local ordinance and law. The encroaching greenhouse on BLM land was present in 2015 and was promptly removed after the boundary survey was completed, which seems to show an effort at compliance. And then moving forward to the final evidence item regarding NSO habitat and protection of sensitive species, as was discussed earlier, the project is consistent with the DPS 16-005, which does require the 50-decibel noise limit. The applicant is required to limit their construction activities to time periods outside the nesting bird season. If construction activities are to commence during the nesting bird season, the applicant is required to conduct nesting bird surveys and adhere to appropriate setbacks from any positive identifications of nesting birds. As was discussed earlier, the applicant has proposed to relocate their nearest cultivation greenhouse to BLM land to increase the buffer from 30 feet to 170 feet and stock the area with 1.1 acres of hardwood. The project does run off grid power and the applicant has altered their proposal from mixed light to outdoor light deprivation cannabis cultivation only. They are required to refrain from any use of anticoagulant rodenticides. And as well, as was pointed out by the appellant, these mitigation measures were prepared in concert with BLM and CDFW with. concert with BLM and CDFW with a significant amount of input, and there have been no further comments from BLM or CDFW expressing any further concern regarding NSO or any other sensitive species or sensitive habitat. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, oh, I'm sorry, we have staff recommendation. So, staff recommends that the board consider the mitigated negative declaration for the CMMLO and the project-specific addendum prepared for the Big River Farm LLC project, make all the required findings for approval of the CUP and SP, and adopt the resolution approving the appeal and approving the Big River Farm LLC project, subject to the recommended conditions. So, now that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, staff is available.
Great, thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Yeah, Supervisor Arroyo.
I'm a little bit perplexed by the communications with the Bureau of Land Management, and I'm just, I'm seeing a lot from, you know, 2019, and then, and it didn't appear, based on that, that they had given conditional approval, so I'm wondering if you could point me in the right direction.
I can try to answer that. So, we did get a lot of correspondence from them early on, and you're seeing that in the record. We did have a joint meeting that I was involved in, the previous assigned planner, Devin Sutfin, and a couple people from both CDFW and the regional manager, and a few people from BLM, towards the beginning of summer this year. And that is when we worked out this plan to relocate the greenhouse and plant the hardwood timber in that one, over one acre area. That was something that BLM and CDFW were both very supportive of. And we left that meeting understanding that BLM's concerns generally had been addressed. They have stated this in the past, that they really do not feel comfortable recommending approval of cannabis, given the federal status of it. And so, I think we've, we have certainly interpreted and discussed this with them, and I think our interpretation is correct, that where they express concerns, you know, they're telling us what their concerns are, and we're going to work to address them, but if they are not further identifying concerns, then we should interpret that as basically they're somewhat satisfied, I guess is the best way to say it. They just can't, they don't feel that they can recommend approval, given the federal status.
Okay, thank you. Just one point of clarification on that, if I could. So, this letter, or this email from, let's see, in attachment seven, it's page 36 of the PDF, it's from June, and it includes that language, the restoration condition draft, is that, that's the language that they felt was suitable for addressing site restoration. I know they're, they want to be silent on cannabis, but it sounds like that's the language that...
Could you point me to the, what page that was?
It's attachment seven in our package, referral agency comments, and then it's page of that, it's page 36. And it's an email from June with some restoration condition language. I'm just trying to map that over to the conditions of approval.
The intent, I know the intent was to include that in here, I just want, before I comment on it, I want to make sure I'm looking at the exact same thing you are.
Sure.
So...
If you need a minute to come back to that, that's okay.
Which one's page 37? Ah, okay, there we go. So, that would be the email from Jennifer Wheeler on June 15th, is that the one?
I'm seeing one from Devin Sutfin on June 17th with, and it's to CDFW and BLM personnel.
Okay, yes, no, I'm looking at the one from Devin as well, so...
Okay.
Yes, that was, the restoration condition draft was basically our attempt to capture what was discussed in that meeting.
Okay.
And I think what you're seeing, there is a later email from Jennifer Wheeler that is basically saying, you know, the proposal seems fine to the BLM foresters. So, I think that was as best as we were going to get as far as support for this proposal from BLM.
Okay, so, in the conditions of approval, that, I see several items that kind of touch on the, because I, I want to preface this by saying that I saw some of the public comments and concerns about this, mentioning the proximity to BLM land, mentioning, you know, obviously the habitat considerations for spotted owl, et cetera, so I wanted to just make sure that the monitoring for three years and the, all the relocation is fully captured. It looks like there's a lot of detail about those, the relocation of any prior cultivation structures.
Yeah, and I believe that that's part of the restocking plan that's included, that is attachment 4L. So, that would be a condition of approval to comply with that restocking plan, which is attachment 4L.
Thank you. I didn't, I didn't dig into the restocking plan, thank you. There's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff here, thanks.
Anyone else at the board with any questions, clarifications for the presentation? Supervisor Bone?
So, as I, and you guys did a nice job on this, as I looked through everything and comments and everything else, none of the agencies, they were all contacted, tribal resources, everything else, and nobody came up in opposition, no agencies came up in opposition to the project at this last meeting, right?
That is correct. There was, it's worth noting that there was some opposition somewhat early on from CDFW and BLM, but after the revisions, we have not received opposition.
I don't, I don't know if this bothers anybody else, but this was actually applied for in 2016, and we're sitting here today in 2023 for a 22,000-square-foot outdoor grow, and I just, it makes you realize that there is a process. It's not an easy process, and it was in front of the board on the 19th, on the planning commission, the 19th and the 21st, 2019 and 2021. So, this has been turned inside and out a few times, I think, hasn't it? And everybody's had their shot at the, shot at this, and it comes down, everything I read, and it's kind of funny, we were talking, this is Human Rights Month, it all comes down to a lot of mentioning of where the individuals originate from. And I heard this from planning commissioners, that they thought there was a lot of, not necessarily applied to the nuts and bolts, but to the origins of the participants. So, that, that concerns me in this day and age when we're trying to open up the permitting across the state, both in dispensaries and anything else, to previous people that were justly at the time convicted of marijuana laws and everything else, and actually putting them at the front of the line on the state level. So, as we go forward, I hope, you know, we look at this for the merits and not from the origins.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Director, or whoever, I guess, could answer. There, you know, is concern in the community with past activity on this cultivation site, and I'm wondering if the application or the applicant, I know that when we do permitting, it's, we're not permitting a person, we're permitting a project, and, but I'm wondering, is there other projects that this applicant holds, and are they in good standing, and what does that look like?
There is one other application that the applicant has, it has not been permitted yet, so it's still in process, but it does have an interim permit and a state license, so we consider that that is in good standing.
And as far as you know, you haven't, I mean, you would know if you've received complaints on that one, and you have not?
We, so, that's an excellent question, we did look into that. There was a lighting complaint in 2019, I believe, that was promptly resolved, and we have not received any complaints on that one since.
Okay, thank you. One additional question, I received a comment, and I see it was addressed in here, but I just want to make sure, on the setbacks from the BLM property, and I see it reflected in the site plan, that the greenhouses will be moved back away from the property line, but what is the setback amount?
It's supposed to be 600 feet, but the setback will end up being 170 feet.
And so, six, explain why that's okay.
So, the ordinance does not establish that everything has to be 600 feet. It says if you're within 600 feet, you're required to get a special permit, which allows discretion to consider the circumstances associated with the public property on the adjacent property. And so, that's what's being done here, is that we're looking at what's on the adjacent property, we're looking at the potential for there to be some public value there, and what that is, and to protect that. And so, part of what's being done here is that the application has been modified from the pre-existing condition to move things back away from the property, to replant, to regrade, to go from mixed light to outdoor, and to minimize the potential disturbance to the potential habitat there. And the potential habitat is associated with northern spotted owl, but as Mr. Holtermann mentioned, no spotted owl have been identified within that holding.
Okay, and so, the, the hap, it's just the spotted owl habitat?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Supervisor Arroyo?
I was looking through the public comment on this, and again, some of it is rather old, because as Supervisor Bone pointed out, this has been in progress quite some time. But it seemed to be, one area of concern was the pristine watershed, and I know how important, you know, the salmon-bearing streams are there, and I'm pretty familiar with the area around Wilder Ridge Road, and it does seem like there are other cultivation sites along the road fairly close by. Is that still the case? Because I'm looking at Google Earth, but it's very outdated.
Yes, that is still the case. There are other cultivation sites surrounding this property. There are two permitted immediately adjacent to it. One diagonally is under process to the, it looks like northwest. And the thing that is really important to consider is the distance from streams. I mean, when we talk about water quality, talk about salmon-bearing streams. I mean, as I recall, 1,400 feet or over 1,400 feet, and there will be the requirement to have a water quality protection plan. And so, there won't be sedimentation from the approved site. It will be monitored, it will be regulated, it will not produce sediment into the stream.
Okay. And, and it, you know, this isn't, not to say that the number of farms is irrelevant to watershed conditions by any means, but, but it does sound like there are other permitted sites nearby, as you stated, and that, you know, this isn't an anomalous type of project for the watershed, is that, is that true?
That is a correct statement.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I've got a few questions and a couple of comments I wanted to make, primarily related to the well and the water supply. The report that was dated June 30th, 2022, pretty lengthy report, it's something like 15, 20 pages in the report, along with diagrams, was done in 2022. And then, in July of 2023, there is an addendum that says, oh, all of that information in that report is wrong, it was the wrong well. So, the entire report was done on the wrong well. And the addendum report is only a page and a half, barely. In the original report, it, and the addendum report, it says there's a low likelihood of being hydrologically connected. It doesn't mean it isn't connected, they haven't really said, the professional involved here did not say it is not connected, which I think is the requirement, but it says low And it also states on page one of that original report that there was no, no information on pumping schedule or water use, although there is in the application and in our documents, that information was provided, but it wasn't available to the hydrogeologist doing the study. You know, it's very problematic when you do a report on the wrong well site, and then you have a very small report to addendum that, pointing out that, well, we went to the wrong well site, but rest assured, the new well site, the actual well site, we also still believe has a low likelihood of hydrologic connectivity, but it also talks about how the subject well, the actual well, is different. The lithography, the data that they get when they do the well log, the drilling, is different on the two sites, and it talks about the actual well having encountered different geologic materials than the long report that was done on the wrong well site. It goes on to also say that it was drilled into a different type of rock units and stuff, and yet, there's no detail in this addendum of how that might affect the overall well, et cetera. The wrong well was, the information in the long report talks about that there was a five-hour airlift pump test done in November 30th, but there was never any effort made to determine the long-term yield. That was just a one-time pumping effort, and they came up with 100 gallons per minute, but a sustainable long-term pumping rate for this well was not determined. But again, it's the wrong well. In addition, in that report, it says that pumping was done on November 30th of 2018, but then, one paragraph down, at the very end of that paragraph, it says the pumping was done October 30th of 2018. So, that's a significant discretion. And looking at the hydrograph for the Matol River in the fall of 2018, there were some very significant storms in the Matol that caused a rapid rise in the river between November 19th and, and November 30th. So, these things matter, these dates, and yet, there's no information in the addendum about pumping rates of the actual well that we have here to even review. I know that the, one of the neighbors is very concerned living down slope from this well, whether it's the, the wrong well or the actual well, they're both up slope from other properties and other springs, and we do know that often that can have connectivity, and that person has expressed concerns about that. Further, there is, again, no geologic information other than to say that it was blue shale in the actual, or in the wrong well versus blue clay and some quartz and some other things in the actual well. So, that's problematic. And then, when you go into the graphs and the charts, in the long report, it gave elevations for the well, and it also gave elevations for the heads of two nearby creeks. One was Jewett Creek, actually, there's two Jewett Creek tributaries, and, but on the graph, there is a cross-sectional graph in your, in the geologic report that shows the elevations of the site well at 1,500 feet, and it shows the head of Jewett Creek at 1,500 feet as well, and yet, in the report, it talks about Jewett Creek being at 1,300 and 1,400 feet. So, that's another discrepancy in the report. These kinds of discrepancies make it very difficult for us, for myself as hydrologist, to actually try and understand what's going on, and especially when it was the wrong well where all the detail was, but in the correct well, there isn't all that detail, and that's all we have to go on in, in this report. So, I just wanted to point those things out. I find that to be concerning, but we'll go into that more, I'm sure, as we discuss it. Those are my primary comments. primary comments at this time. I am concerned that the 600-foot setback isn't being met. I think that was developed for good reasons, and, as was mentioned earlier, BLM has not necessarily said they're in, in agreement with this whole thing. They just said that they want to see future annual reports and some things like that, I believe it was, or that might have been DFW. But as far as storage, they've got 50% or with the addition of the 10 5,000 gallon tanks, they would be at about 50% or so, 65% of storage versus 100% storage and forbearance. The road issues, it's listed in the application as being category four, and yet, when you read further into the reports and stuff, it sounds like actually the box should have been checked that is equivalent to category four, because there are pinch points. So, that's another discrepancy in, in the, the reports that we have here. So, that's all I have at this time. And any other board members with any other comments, questions, clarifications? Yes, Supervisor Bone.
Yeah, and I see where we did give a grant for the 50,000. And I wonder if we're sitting here, if we can make it conditional that in the next two years, or whatever we think is, because obviously, we, you know, we're expecting water again this year, and the drought people have gone over to the flood control. If we could maybe require another 50,000-gallon tank or, or a pond, John and I have discussed this greatly, because ponds are great for a lot of reasons, wildlife and everything else, maybe a small pond to offset what is needed, and we'll be at 100%. Right now, we're at 65% storage when they, you know, utilize their grant money. So, that one seems easy enough there, I would think. So, if at all possible, and then, you know. And then, is the subject, the wrong, we've said the wrong well 40 times, wrong well. I think mistakes happen all the time. But where's the wrong well? Were they in Garberville or somewhere, or is it on the subject property just not being utilized?
Yeah, the, the well is on the same property. It, he acknowledges in that subsequent report, as Chairman Drone had mentioned, that he was initially directed to the, to an existing well that was not the well to be utilized for this. And he subsequently repaired, prepared that updated report for the well that is to be utilized. And the well is approximately 785 feet west, northwest of the well site location described in the previous report.
How many, how many feet?
785.
Okay, so. Anyway, okay. Fifth of a mile, less than a fifth of a mile. I'm just guessing. All right, so I, and so, we're talking maybe the whole under formation changes dramatically, which I know it can. I'm, I'm not a hydrologist. I don't know what you have to do.
Well, I think part of the struggle is, is that he did provide a lot of information in the original report in terms of what the geology is. And, and so, that, that is all documented in the original report. And he does identify that this, this new well is in a different geologic substructure.
Okay. Okay, I appreciate that. But I'm just saying, if, if I was to prove this, would, and I'm sure you're in talks with them, and I'm sure seven years later, there's other things that have been done as we try to permit this small grow. Would another 50,000 gallons of storage in, in two years' time to complete that of some sort be, would the applicant, I guess we can ask them when they come up, but would they be, would they be, would they be, would that be attainable for them?
Well, we're going to go there next.
I understand, but they've, they've had quite a few discussions with them. I think they probably in seven years have got the feelings.
Absolutely.
And I imagine the new well study, since they're expensive, seven years waiting for an application, they probably didn't want to spend as much money the second time around.
Yeah, I, I would say that in this particular case, there's a couple of things going on, and this often gets confusing, is that the 40,000 gallons of the proposed water storage will be rainwater catchment.
Yes.
The remainder of the storage would be taken from the well during the winter, put into storage for during the dry season.
Okay.
I mean, one of the questions the board could ask, consider, is whether or not the applicant is willing to provide 100% storage with the additional storage being rainwater catchment. That would reduce the demand on the well. It's often, it's become very common right now to be concerned about wells.
Yeah.
And, and so, part of the.
Well, if we were, if we were going to ask for rain catchment, probably the most appropriate place to do it is in an area that gets between 160 and 220 inches a year. I was thinking more so than other places that are much, much more to our Humboldt County average. Thank you.
Supervisor Bush now.
This is a 1.0, and have they been cultivating?
Yes, up until 2022.
Up until 2022?
Yep.
Okay. And so, the, okay, I just probably need a minute, though, because the information that Steve said is very confusing.
Yeah, we'll take a quick break in a second here. The addendum report didn't provide any maps, so it does say 785 feet northwest of the other well, which apparently is unpermitted. At least, that's what it states in the addendum. So, it's just, there's no maps here that show us where the actual well is for us to actually look at and review in relationship to other things. That's problematic. So, any other comments, concerns, questions from the board? Okay, why don't we go ahead. We're going to take a quick break, and then we're going to hear from the appellant, give them a chance to come up. And normally, that's a 10-minute presentation. We could go 15 if you need to. We don't have a huge agenda today. But we're going to have, take a break, and we will be back here at 11:10. That's a 10-minute break. Okay, we're back in session. We're going to go back to Director Ford, see if he has any follow-up comments, clarifications.
I do. Thank you, Chairman Drone. With your permission, we'd like to try to bring an explanation to the geologic report and the addendum.
Yep.
So that that can be as, as clear as it possibly can be for everybody.
That sounds great. We're going to show some maps, I fear it looks like.
Through the chair, there we go. Okay. So, one of the things, Chairman Drone, that you brought up is the addendum, which was two pages. It wasn't nearly as substantial as the well report that had been prepared for the, what apparently is the wrong well. However, the well, the addendum does refer to a lot of the previous materials. So, it says that the existing well, and this, what you're looking at here is from the original well report, where this, where it says well site, which is in the CO2 formation, which apparently is Melange. It does say that the new well, the correct well, I should say, is just a little, 750 feet to the northwest in the CO4, which is sandstone. It's apparently in the same line of this geologic cross-sections, and you do have, if I can navigate past this little screen here, the cross-sections that show the existing non-accurate well, and then the correct well, which would be along the same cross-section in the CO4, and then also going to this cross-section, which I think is very useful. You're seeing that the non-accurate well was in the CO2, the current one is in the CO4, and this cross-section doesn't quite show it, but apparently, the correct well is 170 feet higher than the not-accurate well in, in the CO4. It is also further away from the Matol River. So, based on the information in the original well report, we did look at that and determined that he was making, you know, references to that and making the conclusion that the, the well was still likely not connected. I did hear you state that he, you know, he kind of hedged that. He said that it is likely to be disconnected. Our understanding from geologists and from other geologists is that they will almost never and maybe never make the statement that it is disconnected, because there's always some level of connection in, in water. And so, when we've been seeing that comment that it's likely to be hydrologically disconnected, that's, that's been about as solid of a statement from a geologist that, that we've been able to get. So, just wanted to kind of walk you through that. And if you have any questions about, about those, I could try to address those.
On that map you had up before that, is there any way you can show us where the actual well is in relationship to the?
Yes, so.
Wrong well?
Right here. I'll do two things. So, I'll show you real quick here, and then I'll go to the, the satellite image. But here is where they were saying the original location of well is. The new one would be just right up here, just a little bit to the northwest.
I'm having a hard time seeing.
Can you see that little thing moving around there?
I thought that was.
Yeah, see that? And then, what, what I'll do too, just keep this in mind, and if I, I think I have to stop share, but I can share the, maybe there's another way to do this, but if I go to GIS here. Keeping in mind that we do have a property survey that shows that the GIS lines are slightly off. The existing non-permitted well, which will need to be abandoned, was in this general location here. And then, if you can see that red dot, and I'll zoom in, that is the location of the accurate well.
Hang on a second.
Right there. Are you, would you like me to zoom in anymore for that?
Still having a hard time seeing where you're saying the red dot is.
Let me zoom in one more time here.
I can see your cursor moving around, but.
Okay, so, right here, where the, yeah, there he goes.
Off the property.
Well, the GIS lines are actually off a little bit.
Okay.
And we do have a survey that shows.
It's on the property.
That is on the property.
So, those blue lines are in Accu.
Correct.
Okay, okay. Appreciate that clarification. And so, do you have pumping results from the actual well? I didn't see anything in the report of any pumping well results. And of course, if you're doing it in early October, that's an ideal time to see, you know, what you've got, because it's been dry all summer long, right? Versus late November, December, after heavy rainstorms, which the hydrographs show that fall, you're going to have a lot more water available, you know. So, was there a pumping test done of the actual well? It's not in the report.
The only pump test done was at the time of the drilling of the well, so it was the four-hour pump test, which really, as, as you're noting, is not necessarily indicative of long-term yield.
So, we still basically have no information about the pumping rates on the actual well in the record?
Other than what's in the well completion report, yes.
Right, okay, thank you. Supervisor Bone.
And the wrong, unpermitted well, is it unpermitted because it was dug before permits were required for wells? You know that?
I, I don't believe we know the answer to that.
Okay. Because there's a lot of wells out there that were dug when these properties were actually homesteaded and then lies along, because I don't think we need permitted wells till 1970. You guys know better than me. So, it's not so per se an unpermitted well that we know of. It's just a well that was dug before we needed permits. And, well, I'd like to hear from the applicant now, so.
Yeah, yeah. And I will say, Director Ford and staff, that, you know, one of the things I've brought up in the past is that it is difficult to determine hydraulic connectivity. It absolutely is, and almost everything's connected here. We don't have confined aquifers typically. But one of the, the things about all of that is that, you know, these elevations absolutely do matter. And distance, you know, sometimes 1,000 feet away seems like a long distance, but depending on the, the way the strata sit, can actually tell you a lot about hydraulic conductivity. And I've said this before, that really what you need is another drill, or another core drilled, somewhere between your well site and a spring or a tributary you're concerned about, is it connected to it? And if you put in a, a drill hole in between the two, you can then see are the layers tilting this way, or that way, or flat, or whatever. It still doesn't tell you everything that would be nice to know, but it's a lot better than not having that information. And you don't have to case that other well. So, you can just simply have the expense. I know, everything costs money. And this is outdoor, and it's 22,000 square feet. I get all of that, you know. I'm just trying to understand the information that's in front of us. And so, that is something I know that you've been working on, additional standards, although now we're kind of moving away from wells to total storage anyway. But that is how you help determine that a little bit better, is having that extra core that gives you that drilling data, you know, about those layers. Yeah, please.
If I could just clarify one thing, just to make sure that everybody understands this. The well log that is in the information is the well log for the well that will be utilized?
Understood.
Okay.
And it goes down into blue clay and quartz versus blue shale. Blue shale is very productive layer of productivity for water. Any rate, all right. So, shall we hear from the applicant, the appellant at this point? Looks, looks good. All right, please come forward and give us your presentation. How much time do you think you can need? 10, 15?
10 minutes should be sufficient.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. First off, I would like to thank this board here for the depth of analysis they're going through. I think the points made by Supervisor Drone are going to be very helpful in driving, setting policy, and guiding the use of wells in the future. Also, I wanted to thank Supervisor Bone for isolating the fact that, you know, we're hoping for fair consideration on the merits of this case and, and not the origins of the applicants. With respect to some of the items that are brought up, the county has made a very excellent presentation. I wanted to note a few things on top of what they've, they've mentioned. I wanted to note that there have been no, you know, for the record, if, if there have been any complaints, which I don't think there have been with this specific site, other than the public comments received by two individuals. Also, wanted to note that the testimony provided by the two individuals that have submitted a public comment against this project, that is part of my review of emails submitted in 2019, as well as their testimony, their public, their spoken testimony at the planning commission hearing, where this project was denied, that we identified material discrepancies for what they said was witnessed. And in one case, the written record, it said that, you know, they personally witnessed it. In the public testimony, they said their tenants witnessed this alleged activity, this violent activity, which has not been substantiated. I also submitted as part of this appeal, photographic, as well as aerial image evidence showing that the driveway and the road itself was not visible as purported in that testimony. So, I, I believe it's a matter of the record that that testimony is in, in conflict and also not, not supported by the facts of the heavily wooded area, which would obstruct all view of, of the alleged activity. I understand with, to go into detail about that well, I became the agent for this project relatively late in 2022. And so, the discrepancy with the well was identified as part of a CDFW and county walkthrough ahead of developing the final staff report for this project. And it turns out that there, the well that was originally believed by the applicant to be the permitted well was in, unsealed, did not have a seal. It was not a properly, you know, it was. well was in, did not have a seal, it was not a properly, you know, it was evident that it was not a compliant well. And so we went through the record and we identified that the well log and the information that was provided to the hydrogeologist to do his study was in fact for the well that is now on the record, the one with the well log, it's permitted well, and the other well will be abandoned. I understand the concerns with hydrologic connectivity and impacts the watershed. I want to note that this is a 1.0 permit. The water storage, you know, as Supervisor Bone has noted, this has been a seven-year process. Through this process, the applicant has worked diligently to improve the property by adding these additional water storage sources, developing rain catchment system connected to the roof of the, one of the existing structures on the property, as well as adding more and more water storage. And so if we're looking at this from a 1.0 perspective compared to baseline, you know, with two-thirds of the water storage being provided now than there was before, I believe it's a substantial increase. That said, the applicant is comfortable with additional conditions if the board so desires to add additional storage. I would like to provide, if that is a condition, I would like the option, or present the option to give a little bit of flexibility to county staff for this particular matter, because the applicant is transitioning to raised beds with drip irrigation, so there will be additional efficiencies in water usage. Furthermore, you know, there is, a one-to-one offset does not account for a seasonal rainfall that occurs during the forbearance period. And I also want to note that with the substantial amount of storage that's being provided, the, when do wells run dry? When are we going to see impacts? It's going to be during the dry weather season. It's going to be when, during the middle of drought in August or July, and there will be plenty of water stored for that period. You know, the, we can condition the well to not be used from April until November 1st, as with diversionary water sources, but, you know, that's not the primary impact of the watershed. There will be plenty of water in April and May. And so I would, if we want to extend that condition, I would like the opportunity for some grace on that. If we do want to require one-to-one storage for, that's fine, but if we can give the county some flexibility, county staff some flexibility, for us to provide a water balance to account for rainfall during the forbearance period, to minimize the cost of additional tanks, but it's not that much more water storage, so I'll put that out there. I also wanted to note that there was a condition for A13 for additional generator enclosure. The generator is actually a very low, a small generator. It is basically, I believe it's a propane generator, which already makes very little noise. And so if we can just revise that to allow for, you know, noise meeting the 50 decibel requirement with or without enclosure, that would be beneficial. There were concerns about the road assessment, the road to the property. The property is accessed with a paved driveway that connects directly to Wilder Ridge Road, which county maintained, and it's the principal access, you know, in and out of the Honeydew area. And so I don't know if there's any additional mitigation that wouldn't be provided, but it seemed like that would be at the county's, you know, roads, it's county road network that would have to be maintained. And there were, yeah, I just wanted to point out that there were concerns about the pump rates, and the pump rates, as Director Ford noted, are from the original well drilling, and that is part of, that was the basis of the original report. It was just the hydrogeologist was led to the wrong location because the permittee was not, got the wells mixed up onsite, no. And I would like to note that I'm sure there will be public comments that will be coming up, bringing alleging criminal activity, criminal history. There will be reference to a somewhat sensational, a newspaper article that, where my client was a potential victim of a crime, that was luckily interdicted, but he's never been, I want to point out again, he's never been indicted, arrested, questioned. As part of this process, all applicants to get a state license go through background checks with the California Department of Justice. These fingerprints go out to the FBI and the federal level, and so there has been no deviation from, for this project. The same applicant has been the applicant since 2016. He's not tried to hide. He is here just to run a compliant business and make this happen. If the board has concerns about the character or disposition of the applicant, I've spoken with him and he is comfortable making, if it's with him specifically, he's comfortable making the, a condition of the approval to, for him to sell the property or sell the permit, if that is truly the concern that the board has with the operator. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Before you leave, I think there was a question from Supervisor Bushnell.
What is the water tip of the generator?
It's like 25 KW or less. It's the equivalent to the panel for the residence in most-
And then I didn't understand the comment you just made about selling the, I don't understand that.
Well, the Planning Commission had struggled with the allegations with a particular applicant. And if that is, if that concern is echoed by the board, then he would accept a condition to sell the license and not operate it, just be able to realize the value of the entitlement and sell.
Oh, you mean approve and then let him sell it, because, well, we don't-
To ma, yeah.
Yeah, we don't permit people, so we're permitting a project.
And I understand that, but-
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other clarifications for the appellant? Seeing none? Okay, thank you very much. And so at this point, we should do public comment, I think it seems like, unless there's any other questions or clarifications. Cliff, did you have some clarifications?
We'll come back at the end after all public comment and make any comments.
That sounds great, okay. Well, we'll go to public comments at this time then, and for those of you in Zoom, if you're new to the system, please turn off your audio on the video feed, because there is a delay and you could miss your opportunity. And of course, star nine, get your hand raised, and then once you've been recognized, star six will unmute you. So we'll start out with 7454, and you know the drill. 7454, star six to unmute. Looks like you're having technical difficulties. I'll go to the next one in line and come back to you if you'll get one more chance here, and that is 7429. 7429, if you want to, there you go, welcome.
All right, yes, my comments. With staff recommending approval after being denied by the Planning Commission, I'm concerned that that would be disregarding some key ordinance safeguards. And one issue is the northern spotted owl. According to the wildlife assessment reports that is in this whole thing, the nesting habitat is 150 feet from a greenhouse, and maybe that's the one that's being moved. But reading the biologist's survey, they conducted a survey for northern spotted owls, and even though the biologist said that it was not the right time of day for hooting, they did it anyway and said there was no owls recorded. But in the past, there was owl activity located 1,500 feet from the parcel, and this was in the early 2000s, and they're not visible, it could be that they're not visible now because of all the noise and the human activity. So my concern is why lessen the setbacks? Why allow a reduced setback, especially with the northern spotted owl habitat that is there in its sensitive habitat? It's on public land, so that's a concern, is why bend that? And one of the findings from the Planning Commission was the public health and safety, and if all the concerns have been laid to rest, why is no comment from Sheriff Hansel? No comment is usually understood to mean that it's an ongoing investigation and they can't comment. And then there is this thing about the proposed restocking, how that's going to protect the owls. It doesn't seem really very feasible to think that newly planted trees are going to put a big buffer for the northern spotted owl from a grow, even though it is, as Supervisor Bone referred to it as a small grow. Trees take a while to grow, and meanwhile, you continue to have human activity and noise to deter any northern spotted owl nesting. I was concerned that Supervisor Bone also commented on the time length of this application, but it might have to do with the fact that originally one of the greenhouses was on BLM land, and then they also tried to do an RRR because of the grading and things like that, and I don't think that that RRR-
30 seconds.
-was allowed, and then, okay, I'm pretty much done, but I do think that you should definitely consider not allowing the setbacks and some type of noise remedy for the northern spotted owl. Thank you.
Thank you very much, commenter. And we have a couple more hands in the Zoom, and we're going to go to 7108. There you go, welcome.
Thank you. I have similar concerns about going from a 600-foot setback to 170 feet and thinking that planting some trees that are going to take, what, 20, 30 years to form any kind of buffer? And then it's, it's in the critical habitat for the northern spotted owl, and the BLM said they're concerned about the close proximity of the operation to the critical habitat in the storage center. They're not going to find any birds nest when all this stuff is happening, and how many other grows in the area. I was, it's unfortunate that a watershed map didn't accompany this, where it shows where the other property adjacent to this or whatever, just becomes cumulative impact. And do we really care about the northern spotted owl or not? So I think if you're going to allow this, you have to stick to the setbacks that are in the ordinance, and also going from mixed light to light down is just taking the lights out of the greenhouse, so you're still going to have fans and a bunch of noise. And if you're going to go out any grow there, I think it should be outdoor, so you don't have to deal with the fans and the generator noise. And take into consideration that this was an existing for 22,000 square feet, and if this permit is given, it will expand the operation by 10%, which is 2,000, almost 2,000 more square feet. So, yeah, you'll be impacting things more. So cumulative impact-
30 seconds.
-because other people got accepted, we really got to think about how much is too much. So setbacks, let's think about the birds. Thank you.
Thank you, commenter. And next we have 7454. Let's see if it works this time. I see you called back in. Star six to unmute. I know you're not listening to the audio, so I'm not sure what's going on. You seem to have difficulty unmuting. All right, I'm going to go ahead and go to comments here in the audience, and at the end of that, I'll give one more opportunity for trying to unmute. I'm not sure what's going on for you, 7454. So we'll go to those here in the audience today. Please come forward, and if you're interested in commenting, please line up for efficiency and welcome, and you've got three minutes.
Thank you. Hello, my name is David Allen Parrish Jr. I'm an applicant with the county, a cannabis applicant. And I just wanted to bring up, I want to bring up Measure A right now, because it's a kind of a thing that really needs to be put on the table. And this whole project has been going on for seven years. I don't personally know the applicant, but could you imagine paying for all this for seven years? You guys have drawn this on. You need to either tell this guy to catch all the water and throw those wells away and keep his permit, and all those accusations coming from the neighbors have no factual basis behind them. That's why, whatever somebody said earlier about the sheriff, the sheriff's not going to come out here and waste his time for somebody that's not even been, there's no case against the guy. So what you guys are doing is bringing up things that don't have factual evidence, what Mr. Ford said that needed to come to actually bring evidence. So there's no evidence against the applicant. You guys wasted his money. You guys need to just say, if we have a problem with the water, which it seems like, Mr. Madron, you've brought up some really, I would say, positive things, and it's showing that the water does have fault. There's huge fault in the water. We don't have the right well, I mean, this by seven years, those are things that we should have worked out. And right now, I think we should, as a county, say, hey, listen, we have a huge issue. Measure A, the county is really concerned about water, roads, all kinds of things. We should just say, we have an issue here, bring all the water. Give it five years. If you can do it in five years, we appreciate it. But you guys need to, I think you guys need to do things more like, think about the applicant. There's nobody here in the community that's saying, these are facts. This guy shot this guy, and this guy shot this guy. That didn't happen. You know why? Because it's not here. And if it did happen, we don't really care, because there's no evidence. And anyways, I'd just like to bring up the fact that, now I have another minute, I'd just like to bring up the fact that the county really, you know, looks at these permits and discriminates against cannabis growers, but you guys don't look at the alfalfa growers. I have an alfalfa grower just down the street from me, they use 110,000 gallons during the summer a day. I use 50,000 a year, but I've had to drill a $35,000 well, and maybe that's what the applicant will have to do, but I don't know. All I'm saying is that you guys are bringing all these things, and really, it doesn't seem like, with the price of cannabis nowadays, that the applicant can even make any money. So you guys need to think about, how in this guy even going to survive and feed his family? I know everybody else in the community is thinking about their family, but we have to think about the applicant, too. Thank you for letting me speak here today.
Thank you, commenter. And anybody else? This is your time to comment.
Hi, my name's Mark Hilofsky. I own the property 9351 Wilder Ridge Road, next door to 9320 Wilder Ridge Road. My tenants, an elderly couple and their son, witnessed a gunfight at the driveway entrance to 9320 Wilder Ridge Road. They heard a lot of gunfire, went outside and walked up their driveway to the county road, saw cars in the applicant's driveway and the opposite side of the road shooting at one another. The property line runs diagonally through Wilder Ridge Road in front of the entrance to 9320. The gunfight occurred on both properties. In the North Coast Journal article dated April 25, 2019, it states that an informant told the FBI exactly how much money was to be found at the property. This proves two things, that Ivan Elliott, the applicant, is on the FBI radar despite what his agent says, and that these are the type of people he deals with. Despite the rosy character his agent portrays of the applicant, we are more concerned about the character of the people he deals with, of which we have no control. We were contacted by the local BLM official who, at the time, was against the project. He asked us to visit the FBI office. There we were shown photos of Ivan and three other people some we recognized. We were not the only neighbors to be interviewed by the FBI. Due to our concern for public safety, we got a call from the planner of the project who said, "Great news, Mark. The applicant has decided to triple R the project to Hindley Ranch Road in Honeydew." Unfortunately, due to the neighborhood opposition, that never, that never happened. We didn't, they didn't want him either. As I have stated at the Planning Commission meeting, we have a spring providing water to the house located on the- to the house located on the northeastern side of Wilder Ridge Road. The spring has not been registered since the water does not flow off the property and is not required. Is the only source of water on our property. For 20 years, the spring has been very reliable until 2018, which was the first year we started having problems. This summer was, was bad too. According to the applicant's hydrologic survey, the depth of the well providing water to the grow is 1,530 feet elevation. Our spring located below the county road is 1,530. I believe they show the same aquifer being so close. I am concerned that my spring may run dry in the summer months. The situation seems to be getting worse each year. We're on the top of a mountain and there's limited water. The project mentions water storage and it has been, but our experience working in the water storage business that at various farms, some will only use their stored water after the primary source runs dry.
Thirty seconds. Oh, I'm sorry.
There is no enforcement to use the stored water at all.
My apologies, but that was your three minutes.
All right.
All right, thank you. It goes quick. Perhaps your friend might be able to complete the comments. Yeah. Welcome.
Yeah, I'm Rod Silva. I also co-own the property. What he was saying that we've been involved in the water storage business, we built a lot of water tanks around the county for this particular industry and it's been our, what we've noticed is that people won't use their stored water until the primary source has really run dry. It's just backup. They're still going to use from the creek, the spring or the river. Regards to the, the shooting that he spoke about, it was, and here is a copy of the police report if anybody wants to see it. As well as the location of the entrance to our driveway and the applicant said the agent was incorrect, there's a direct line of sight. The only thing I want to really add is that this happened, the applicant has a very colorful history and as my partner said, you know, we don't know who he's dealing with and despite the fact that he said he's using metric, the only way anybody's making a profit is by selling outside of metric. Our neighbor does it, people come in and out buying all the time and he's licensed. So I'm assuming this will happen with this, this permit as well. So who's coming and who's going and will they have guns or not have guns? I believe someone mentioned at the triple R in Honeydew that they didn't want it because they knew there was going to be a lot of cash and with a lot of cash, there's always guns.
Thank you, commenter. Anybody else here today who would like to comment on this agenda item before I go back to that one in Zoom? Yes. Well, are you speaking now as a member of the public or want to respond to comments you've heard as the appellant?
I would like to respond.
Okay, I'll give you a brief opportunity to do so. Pretty quick, as soon as I deal with.
Yeah, I'll just address the comments regarding the BLM setback made by commenters that, you know, BLM setback reductions have been approved in the past. You know, it's, as, it's not an uncommon thing. As Director Ford has stated, you know, the limitation or the requirement is to receive a setback reduction and so it is case specific. In this case, I want to reiterate that the proposed mitigation and the restocking with hardwood was done in collaboration with both BLM and CDFW. Originally it was actually proposed to be with Doug Furr, but you know, after working with biologists and BLM, it turned out that hardwood would be a better buffer species. And so just wanted to just point out that the level of cooperation and collaboration that was done for this specific project, including onsite walkthrough with CDFW and their, their SEQA specialist or staff to review the project. So there were two personnel from CDFW that walked the site up and down with us to develop the mitigations for this project. I want to clarify my earlier discussion or comments too with respect to the wells and the mitigation and the conditions for that. I think if we can have, you know, there's two years to implement, right, after conditions approval are issued, but I would like to suggest with this as a 1.0 that, you know, the, that two years of water logs and as well as rain collection and a detailed water balance, we could even use drought year rainfall data from the most severe drought on record to develop sort of anticipated rainfall capture during forbearance season to reduce the number of water tanks that would be needed. With respect to the, you know, my earlier statements about not having police report, I would like to state that we, I've on two occasions submitted information requests to the sheriff's office and I'm sure the county has done on other occasions as well and, and we have not heard back. And so the, if there is a report, I'd like to verify that, but then I'm available for further discussion or comment as needed. Thank you.
Okay, great. We have one more public comment, but Supervisor Bone, did you, okay, let's do the final public comment here and that is going back to Zoom 5288. Hopefully this new line gives you a better response. There you go, welcome.
Well, that's a technology trial there. Kent Sawaski, thank you for my opportunity to speak. I would like to say ditto to what both Roby and Bonnie said there in the last two speakers. This is a little irritating because this has been an ongoing thing where many people feel like their, their health, safety and welfare has been endangered by an attractive nuisance. I'm not saying that that's the fault of the, of the particular farmers, but it's the nature of the business. Large sums of cash, you know, black market or not, shots being fired, this is, this is not an imaginary thing. I, I think if I were you, I would definitely, if you consider this permit, I would accept the applicant's suggestion that he remove himself from the project. I would suggest that you make this based strictly upon rain catchment process. There's no way to mitigate what's been done to the environment there unless you're able to put in old growth fir trees, which is my understanding that the natural habitat or old growth trees for spotted owl. I would not allow a reduction of the setback from this. I can't see how you could mitigate that. And if you feel like moving forward with those as conditions, I would, I would accept the offer and I would accept the offer to go with full forbearance and full storage of water if you're going to condition this project. Otherwise, I, I would recommend that you deny the appeal and uphold the decision of your planning commission. Thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, commenter. And at this point, it looks like we will close the public hearing, public comment at this point, not the hearing, but the public comment and bring it back to the board for any questions, clarifications, discussions. Supervisor Bone?
I looked at the copy of the 911 call that was made in 2018. It said nothing was, no reportable on it, the way I understood that with all the acronyms on there. And again, I don't know the applicant and I don't know, I can't tell you if I, if he was the one on site, but Director Ford and I were on site when we discussed moving the RRR to Honeydew. We were on site. Crime, piles of cash, that never came up. What it came up to was the proliferation of grows in downtown Honeydew and the location where this was going to go, where they were going to move it to, and that was the basis. And I can ask Director Ford if I'm remembering right, but there was no inference to who was there. I, and I know newspapers and journalism always get everything 100% right, but I just, it doesn't always happen that way. I understand your concerns. I, I'm reading between the lines on some of this stuff. I had never heard that they run their wells dry and then move on to their storage because I always thought their wells took care of a lot of their onsite and I probably haven't been around enough grows to know the difference. So I, but I just find out that running. And then I looked back, when did this stop? This was a, when did their interim drop 22? So in 19 or 20 and I don't see our well guy here, but I didn't hear them say that the well that they're concerned about, whether they're concerned about ran dry in the drought years and yet they were operating without the increased water storage. It would have been great if you could have said, we ran dry right below them and they just sucked the ground dry. I'm not hearing you say that. I'm hearing, it could happen. If it didn't happen in 20, in the drought years when we historically get 180 inches out there and we got less than triple digits, then I would have been concerned. But to state what happened at a meeting that Director Ford, and I hope I'm fairly correct, Director Ford and I were at and had this discussion about expanding, because there is a grow already there, but expanding the grow that was there was going to, it was actually going to take the view where they were putting it and put it right in front of a house and that was a major concern of ours at that time. So that's why it was designed. We never talked about the kidnapping of an airplane or however that story went, I didn't read the story. So I just, and I don't think I've, you know, and this is out of my district, so I defer, but it's close because it's coming out Wilder Ridge and things like that. When this happened in 2018, my phone completely blew up because it was close enough and people were calling and asking. The sheriffs couldn't find any evidence of the shootout and I'm not saying it didn't happen, but I got no evidence that it did. It's all hearsay. And, and then I'm going from the planning commission meeting the other night that really, and I'm going to refer back to Human Rights Day and everybody has equal rights and everything else, we approve projects here on properties. We don't approve the people. Now, there is bylaws that they have to, they have to go get, you know, some check-ins and things like that, but it sounds like he has passed all the muster and no flags fly up. So I'm having a, I respect the planning commission, but I, our building and planning, when I read this and read between lines, I think there was a lot more to this than the wrong well, which they didn't have, but the water or anything else. And it sounds like they're going to actually give them the two years and they will, they will remedy that. But as was stated earlier, and I, and I perfectly agree with the 110,000 gallons a day that goes on an alfalfa field and then somebody that uses 50,000 annually, it's an agricultural crop, so we need to, but I, we do have a chance to regulate water and I think that's an important thing we do, but thanks.
Thank you. Any other supervisor royal?
Thank you. I, I did read the article. It was part of our board packet. This CAD report was, was not, but I see it was filed and it looks like the call was made in, in April of 2019 about the December 2018 incident. But again, consistent with what Supervisor Bone said, we really have to use the facts as they've been proven to, to make our findings here. And so I want to turn to the things that I do have, you know, I think we could consider as conditions of approval and, and I want to understand a couple of things just a little bit better. One of them is, so a couple of things about the site plan and layout and neighboring parcels I had questions about, so bear with me staff for just a moment. So on the attachment 1C, the site plan, the second page, and attachment 4F, the property boundary survey, both show that the parcel, I can't see the numbers of the parcel, the parcel ending in 11 is where the, I believe that was where you showed that the well, the actual well is. It looks like that's under different ownership. Does it now belong to the applicant or is there some kind of agreement in place to be using the well?
No, the confusing thing there is the property line as shown on the GIS is in the wrong place.
Oh, okay, okay. So it's just over the property line, but it's actually on the same property.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. I must have missed that. Okay. So, and then with respect to the BLM properties, so I, I can definitely see that APN 108022006 is public land and that is the BLM property. It does look like, at least per our GIS portal, that some of the other surrounding properties are private on either side. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So there's this one little finger of BLM property that comes up to above the parcel.
That is correct.
Okay. And so it's, okay, that helps. And then I'm, I'm inclined to agree about the keeping the enclosure for noise. I realize that that was one request for flexibility, but you know, given the proximity, if we are going to consider this as a board moving forward, I think additional measures of protection would be, would be definitely warranted. I did want to understand what the conversation has been historically about moving any of the other infrastructure. I realize there's slope involved and there's some challenges on the site. Has there been much discussion about moving those other greenhouses so there's a greater setback?
So that, through the chair. That is a constant discussion and in this particular case, and if you want to see it, we can show it on the screen, but this is all timberland. And so to move it further back to an area that would accommodate the greenhouses would result in cutting, removal of timber, cutting trees, clearing the area. Certainly this area could be restored, but that's the trade-off is you're impacting areas that's not currently impacted by this.
Okay. And then I've been hearing some interest, you know, or maybe I'm projecting, but I'm, I'm hearing that there may be interest in additional water storage and that the applicant would consider that. Do staff have any thoughts on that for our consideration?
We would agree that adding additional water storage would be a benefit and would encourage that to be rainwater catchment, especially in an area that has high rainfall and, and so that would reduce the demand on the well, on the well water. So we would be supportive of that.
Okay. And then just to put a finer point on the BLM question, it sounded a little tepid as far as the response you got from them. Was there a concrete written response? Is there a concrete written response where they said, we're not going to object to this reduced setback?
I may need to defer to Cliff if he's got something other to say, but our experience in working with BLM is that when they're strongly opposed, they are very clear about that. When it gets to a point where they're mildly not perturbed, they don't say anything.
Okay.
And so we're left in a place where based upon the information that we have, we don't have direct opposition to what the current resolution is. And so interpreting behavior is that this would seem to be a satisfactory solution.
Okay. So, but CDFW is much more blunt about what they think and they've provided more input to the process in that, in those joint meetings with them and BLM, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's all reflected in the staff recommendation here?
Yep.
And the conditions of approval?
Yeah. And I, I think this is, I will say this, this is the only project I can think of off the top of my head that has a situation where there's kind of an existing situation where BLM and CFW are both involved. And both of them have come and worked out a solution with the applicant, with the county and it's something that everybody can live with.
Okay. I just have one.
I add one thing to that.
Of course, of course.
That is, I think, really important here is that a lot of times, you know, it's 1.0, 1.0 gets thrown out and it's a pre-existing cultivation site. Part of the objective of
Part of the objective of our cannabis program is to take existing cultivation sites and improve the baseline condition. And based upon the work that's been done with CDFW, with BLM, what the applicant has agreed to, this definitely represents a, an improvement over the baseline condition, which is that which existed prior to 2016.
I'll just say one more thing, and then I'll be done here for, for now, and trying to keep it succinct. But I, I can really empathize with the concern about having neighbor conflicts and the fears that are being expressed here. And as I said, we really have to use, we have to use the proven facts to make our determinations. And I do believe we need to apply our existing ordinance as fairly and consistently as possible. So given the volume of information that's been sorted through here, you know, I'm certainly prepared to talk about conditions by which we can approve this because there's been, I can see that there's been significant effort made to improve the condition and to be in compliance to the extent feasible with this site. And so certainly open to what other board members think about what that should look like, but, you know, I, I just, I think that's, I, I realize it's really tough for, for the people who have come here today and have these, you know, great concerns, and I hope folks can appreciate that we need to apply our regulations as evenly and consistently as possible and, and use facts to make those determinations. So with that, I'd love to hear what others have to say.
Supervisor Wilson? I'm sorry. Supervisor Bushnell, I didn't see your hand. Go ahead. That's fine. Go ahead. You're right, I said, yeah, anyway, and then Wilson.
Thank you. So a couple of things. I, I want, how big is the property itself?
It's 90 acres.
And so do you think a rain catchment pond, given that terrain, would work, or rain catchment tanks?
We've not evaluated a pond, but if we could write a condition that provided a flexibility to allow a pond if a suitable location could be found.
Yeah.
I think that would be ideal.
Okay. And then also, you know, given the well, I mean, if there were additional tanks, then you could do the, do, you know, fill those tanks and then do the forbearance to make sure that the spring that the neighbors use doesn't, isn't affected. So that would be another option. I just don't know that that area is suitable for, for a pond. And then a few things. You know, I recognize, first of all, to the applicant, I mean, I hope you hear your neighbors that they're scared, and it's not one neighbor, it's several, several neighbors, and, and everyone has a right to change and improve. And I think that I've heard that through the last few years, there's been no, you know, activity or even bad activity happening out there that has been reported. And so, you know, everybody has a right to improve their behavior and the behaviors of what happens on cultivation sites specifically, and I think that that has been proven. But I'm wondering if we could add a condition also that there's an additional inspection that happens out there, and I hope the applicant would be okay with that, just to, you know, it's a very rural area and it's a very long ways from town, and so hopefully that would add some safety to, or not safety, but maybe some better for the neighbors to feel a little bit more secure. And then also, I want to ask about the setbacks also. So I did hear what you said to Supervisor Arroyo, that it, it doesn't really fit the area and that you've, you've tried to accommodate as much as you can to get the setbacks from the public lands and with the owl habitat, and that you can't meet the 600 setbacks. Is that a true statement?
I, I think that's a true statement, yes.
Okay. And then is there, with the NSO and not finding an owl, would there be future NSO studies done?
So there could be. One of the things that we did do, and this is reflected in the staff report, is the way the project is conditioned and evaluated is assuming presence of NSO. So whether or not they're not, the, the study has reflected that they didn't find any, and there could be lots of reasons for that.
Right.
But we've treated this, conditioned this, and the project has been structured as if there is NSO presence.
Right. So I did hear from, you know, several of the neighbors, and you did hear a comment about putting in the, the oaks and that it would take several years, and so I don't know that that, is that, is that a mitigation that CDFW wanted?
That was part of the discussion and solution that was, everybody agreed to, yes.
Okay. Because, you know, there, it's going to be years and years before that's effective. But, and so I don't, I guess that would, I don't think that would work, but I, go ahead.
Well, if, if I could, the primary mitigation is really to address sight, sound, light. And, and so obviously the condition to ensure that noise requirements of the ordinance are complied with.
Right.
Is, is part of the mitigation package.
Right.
The requirement to convert from mixed light to outdoor light depth is part of the mitigation package. I, I think that, you know, over time, what we're trying to do is allow a restoration of an area that was damaged, but do it in such a way that creates a more valuable habitat. And so that is a twofold effort there. One is mitigation to create a little bit more of a buffer, but two is to create a, a more beneficial habitat for wildlife.
Okay. Okay. So I, I, you know, struggle with a finding that would allow me to not approve this, and so what I would really like to see is an extra inspection, rain catchment tank or pond to bring, to bring up more forbearance, whether it be forbearance or whether it be, you know, rain catchment pond, if, if it could be. And then, you know, just to be mindful of your neighbors, you, you've heard lots of things today, and so that just is really, should resonate with you. And, and then also, the generator, I, I heard the generator housing discussion, but I think with a 25 KW, you need a, you need a house around that. That's not a small generator, so I, I don't think that is a point of discussion at all. So, and that would be my comments.
Okay. Thank you. Supervisor Wilson?
Likewise, I think I have a hard time with the findings for denial, except I do have some questions around the setback issue. I mean, so anything less than a 600-foot setback really kind of puts us into discretionary mode. Am I, am I right about that?
That's absolutely correct.
Okay. So in some ways, the sort of the, the legal hook with relationship to findings isn't as, isn't as strong when we have this discrep, you know, if, if we had the 600-foot setback, that would be a much harder threshold to deal with than now that we have a less than a 600-foot setback, that we now are in a, in that space where we have a much more discretionary window to work with. So I, I, I get that, but still, I, I do lean towards what Supervisor Arroyo saying with relationship to, sorry, I said it again, what she said when referring to trying to be even and judicious about how we will apply these, these ordinances, or, and, so I was wondering, this piece of property, how many, can you remind me how many acres this piece of property is?
90.
90. Was there ever a consideration for a conservation easement as mitigation for the, for the setback?
That has never been discussed.
Yeah. I mean, I think that that, from my perspective, is a reasonable consideration when you're doing these setbacks, that I, I think that a conservation easement is probably more applicable than even some of these project changes, which I think are also really important. I'm not sure how we would apply that today, but I think it, it's something that we, that could be considered, and, and actually, I think it's something that should be considered when we're talking about lessening these setbacks, because we have a lot of space there that could be managed for the resources we're trying to protect and that BLM thinks is important. And I'm not sure what the plans are for that, but I would, I would assume that, you know, not having it be developed would be probably better for those resources that were in question. So I, from my perspective, I, I'd like to see that if it's possible. I, I agree with Supervisor Bushnell with rela, I'm gonna say it now, in regards to the generator. I'm gonna try, now, now there's just gonna be a bunch of soundbites of me trying not to say with relationship, so. So, which is fine, you know, everyone should go through this speech therapy, it's really, it's fun. I, I think that, that's really important. It was interesting, the discussion around the raised beds. Have we seen that as a mitigation before in terms of the water saving? And one of the things I don't want to see, I, my preference is not more plastic water tanks. I just, our landscape is covered in plastic water tanks. Someday, those things have to get disposed of. I just, it's just, we have no mitigation or plan for the disposal of all that plastic waste, and so anyways, I was just kind of wondering, do we, have we seen this before, actually change, modifying the, the?
We actually do see people changing their cultivation practices to go to in-ground or in beds, because it's very similar. And, and it, the understanding is that it does use less water.
Okay.
Having greenhouses also with raised beds uses less water. What, it's intuitive, but when you've got a burlap sack or something like that, water's going in, then it's evaporating out of the outside. When it's in the ground, you don't have that same amount of evaporation.
And I guess what I'm getting at is, I, I did appreciate the applicant's request that maybe looking at actual usage for a year or some, a season to respond to those changes in practice to see if more water tanks are actually needed to get to that 100%. I, I do, I do think that the use of wells is in, in, on this, on the site is probably, considering the discrepancy with relationship to the, the report, is probably not, but I think we should prob, we, it should be, we should move away from that. So I, I'll, I would sit in that space. But I will say, sort of as a, as a side note on the, on the report for the, in terms of the language, I think that the hydrogeologist should use the term significance as to whether or not it's significant, whether it'll have a significant impact, because that will, that will, that's the language we use for SEQA, and that's the language we use for, for this analysis, because even if no one's, we use that all the time because we aren't totally sure about everything. So we use, is this a significant impact, not, is it not an impact? Because as Supervisor Madron said, everything is connected. So to say in an absolute way that it's not connected is just an unreasonable, unattainable expectation that doesn't match reality. But is it, will it have a significant impact? And I think that is what we should be applying, the language we should be applying to those hydrologic reports. Those are the comments I have right now.
Thank you. And Supervisor Bone?
Yeah. In relationship to everything that's been said, and I, now, and I just want one clarification before I go on, from Supervisor Wilson, are you saying if they did a full-blown well report and it came back positive, you'd be okay with the well? Because you said you didn't like it because the, the paperwork was your, so would we, if they could come back and say there wasn't a significant, would you be okay with the well?
No, no. What I'm saying is I would much prefer.
It was a yes, no. It was just a yes, no.
I would prefer definitely no. So thanks.
So in relationship to that, what, I'm going to make a motion that we approve this project with, I do like the applicants, and I don't know how you would word this, a two-year chance to come up to 100% non-reliant on the wells, but that, or even coming close to that with them doing the water study that Supervisor Wilson referred to, that they would like to do in a year, to actually see if their water usage will be to that level. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think we've got language to address that.
Okay. And besides that, I don't, you know, I guess I could say be a good neighbor, but I'm not going to throw that in there. And which, and which allows me to, before we get this, you know, the reason I'm making the motion the way it is, the, and I appreciate you guys coming in to talk today, but neither one of you are the occupants of the property, right? It's an investment property?
It's not the, yes.
To the neighbors? Okay. So, because I didn't have any, I know, I know Supervisor Bushnell's talked to people, but I didn't have anybody, the residents or anybody else, or anybody speak for them. So with that, that's my motion, simple.
Is there a second to the motion?
I would like an extra inspection done.
See, the only reason I didn't put that in there is because what you're doing is you're alienating them different from any other permit we do. We don't provide that for anybody else. I, we don't allow that, or we don't, shouldn't say that. We haven't put that condition on anybody else.
How about we ask the applicant, and they said yes when I asked them, because I looked?
No, no, I understand, I understand, but then that will be down the line, and with staff, time, and everything else, who's the extra applicant? From Ag, planning a building, CDFW?
I, I really want to be responsive to the community that have raised concerns, and I think the applicant has said he's fine with it.
No, that's, and that's fine, and he'll, I will make an amendment that the applicant will pay for an additional inspection for the first three years, and if there is nothing that comes from that, then we've proven that they've, they've improved, I can't say improved their actions, because I, it's working. Let's put it that way.
I'll second that motion, but I want to have a, a additional question to the director, if I could.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Through the chair. So Director Ford, when with the water study, what would be the outcome? Would you need to also make in that motion rain catchment? And I, Supervisor Wilson, I, I hear what you say about the, the tanks. I, I concur with that. However, sometimes in, you know, areas, it's not, rain catchment ponds don't work, so that's why I was having that discussion. But would it need to be in the motion, or would that be just something that would happen?
Well, I, I think what we're proposing is that there be an annual irrigation need study for the first two years, and, and then at the end of that, or after that, that they would need to provide any additional water storage that would be based upon rainwater catchment to meet their total irrigation demand.
And however that works out, whether it be a pond or?
Right.
Okay.
And, and we could put within that condition that it may be satisfied by a pond or by tanks.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Arroyo?
I'm definitely interested in continuing to have the water storage discussion. I, I do, I apologize to staff for not raising this question beforehand so you could have a map ready. I'm very much struggling to understand the connection. I'm very much struggling to understand the connection between this BLM property and any other BLM properties. It seems like it's isolated, like it's not even.
It's an inholding.
It's an inholding, right? Is that correct?
If I could share my screen?
That'd be great.
It's an isolated 40 or two 40s.
Okay. That makes sense.
There's a number of those in the Matola and they typically have old growth forests on them.
Yeah, I'm looking at the BLM map, but it's just confusing.
So if you can see my cursor, this is the property right here.
Yes.
This is the BLM property right here. This square right here is BLM. If I were to click on it, it would show, and it says United States of America right there. You can't really read it. I can on my computer. Down below it says Bureau of Land Management.
Yeah. And I'm looking at the GIS portal too, but then everything around it is not.
That is correct.
Okay.
It's in BLM inholding.
Okay.
Except if I could, this parcel over here with the road on it, this is BLM over here.
And that's a 120.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm seeing, I'm seeing it on the BLM map now too. Okay. Thank you for orienting me. Okay. So yeah, it's a bit of a patchwork over there, but I, it's not, it is surrounded on that other side by a private parcel.
Here, yes.
And then to the left of the BLM parcel that abuts the property, right? The L-shaped one?
That, that is correct. This parcel here is private.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah, and most of these BLM parcels typically have old growth on them. They're isolated parcels, residual. I will say there's active efforts, efforts there in Shoals Creek to do restoration for coho habitat and other things. It's a primary tributary with coho habitat in the Matola. You know, the 600 set, 600-foot setback issue for me is, is a big one. I recognize that the parcel doesn't have other areas where all of these greenhouses could be moved to without clearing additional property. It seems evident on the aerial photo, but that's certainly not our fault or our problem. And if you do expect that old growth on that BLM adjoining parcel to actually have spotted owl use, it certainly has a higher probability of that if there isn't a whole lot of activity within 130 feet. Just saying, that's what we know about spotted owls and their habitat uses and stuff like that. So, I mean, that alone is a condition that could be used to deny the permits. The failure of the well reports at every level and the fact that at this point we still don't have any pumping rate information. We don't have a defined location other than kind of pointing to a red dot on a map here. We don't have information about where that actual well site is that intends to be used in relationship to the neighbor's spring, which as I understood it is just across the other side of Wilder Ridge Road. And they say they have been experiencing drier conditions in that well in the last several years. Is, you know, and they say that their well, their spring elevation is the same elevation as what the bottom of the well was. But that was the bottom of the well that isn't the actual well. That was the mistaken well. I don't, I mean, there's some information here that I could extrapolate if I spend a little time on what the bottom of the well is. It's the actual well, but suffice to say that the actual well is not quite 200 feet, 170 feet higher up in elevation to the, the well, the wrong well. The wrong well is right at the grow site. The actual well's 800 feet away from the well site requiring a whole lot more pumping and, you know, pipelines and all kinds of other things. But I just was curious, you know, where the spring is in the neighboring property in relationship to the actual well. Is it possible for you to show us that? You know, in, in the original well report, which was quite detailed, but it was the wrong well, it went into great detail about its proximity to the two tributaries of, of that creek. But it didn't speak at all about this adjacent spring on the adjacent property and show us both, you know, aerial photo location comparison as well as a cross-section in terms of elevations, just to kind of give a sense of are these things connected or not? Sometimes it's really clear, other times it's not as clear. But is that possible for you to, do you have that information where that other spring is?
Short answer is no.
Okay.
I can show you on the aerial and then give you a brief explanation. This is the subject piece of property that was being discussed.
Adjacent?
Yes.
Property owners, okay.
And, and part of the struggle is as the property owner mentioned, this is not a registered spring.
It doesn't have to be.
I agree with that, but there's no way to know it's there.
Understood.
To, and to evaluate for an impact.
Valid point.
With, with it not being registered and a valid water right. So it's, it's being used. They've certainly got a right to use it, but in order to evaluate that, it's, it's something that it would have helped had it been registered.
Certainly. But its location is what, just on the north side of Wilder Ridge Road there?
That.
Or the north side of the map?
Yeah, that was the testimony.
Right up in that area. The actual spring, while it's 758 feet away from the wrong well, I mean, the actual well in distance from the wrong well was 758 feet, but it actually, the actual well is actually a lot closer to that spring in distance than the other one was because it moves to the northwest is what we heard.
Slightly to the north, but mostly to the west.
Yeah, up in the corner.
It really moved over here.
Right.
And, and, and as opposed to in here.
Right.
And, and so that, that spring is someplace up in here.
Yeah. So regardless of all these discrepancies, which I find to be very problematic when we get these reports that have so many discrepancies and lack of, of issues, and while that could absolutely be a finding, I agree that, you know, storage and forbearance is a, a solution to that. Regardless of what was presented and without getting into ongoing hours and hours of arguments over that, a storage and forbearance condition is a way to deal with that. I didn't hear in the motion anything about forbearance. I think that I would like to hear that added to the motion with a forbearance period. And, you know, these things are hard to monitor. Who in the heck's going out there and actually monitoring forbearance, right? We do have a precedent here where a subdivision, a number of years ago, was required to put some telemetry. There's these not that expensive systems of telemetry that you can put on the well and you have that for the Moss subdivision where you actually monitor the forbearance period. Now, it can be jury-rigged by property owners to bypass the telemetry and the rest of it, but it is at least one element of trying to have, you know, trust but verify, so to speak, right? An ability to be able to do that. So I would like to suggest to the motion maker and the secondor that I'm good with the full storage. I'm even good with giving them two years to get there because I think it's appropriate to figure out what you're using and, and what you're going to need to take. In fact, in the DFW recommendations, they were all over that, talking about annual reporting and, you know, monitoring and conditions and all that. But I think a forbearance period, I agree that we can get rains in, in April and May, significant rains, typically April in particular. Sometimes May, sometimes, you know, two summers ago, we got it into July, but that's unusual. So a forbearance period is something like July 1st through November 15th with telemetry on, on the well so that, you know, that signal sends information directly to the planning department saying what is going on with pumping, when the pumping is happening and what, at what rates, et cetera. I still have an issue with the whole setback thing. I just really, you know, it's very problematic, but if BLM didn't want to push the issue, I'm not going to push it. But I do think that that old growth habitat that's right there, you can actually see it in the aerial photo, is a very darkened and denser habitat area in the forest, but I'm not going to push that issue. So again, if we could just make those changes to the, the conditions and the motion, I would feel satisfied, although I will say I think I could probably list six different conditions for denial. But that's not where we're going, so let's see what we can do to make the project better. I am concerned about the neighbor's spring and how that intersects with that. But again, storage and forbearance would be a good way to help protect that. So it's a way forward. This is a seven-year-old project that is, but there are reasons for that that have been discussed. Motion maker, are you willing to add forbearance?
No. Well, hang on. Forbearance is already part of the, isn't there forbearance on?
That's not currently conditioned. They do have storage.
We have, we don't have forbearance. I thought we had forbearance.
No, it's, it's not. Because it's not a, normally it's a surface water version.
Are we talking forbearance July 1st or what?
November 15th. This year we were really lucky. We got rains in October, but we usually don't till November.
Yeah, because we have a drought. Yeah, I'll do, I'll do a forbearance July 1st, October 1st. I think.
Well, you got to go to November because October is often our driest month of the year.
Did you see how much, did you see how much rain we got October this year?
It's not a normal one. Ask the contractors who you know. It's not normal to get so much rain.
Deer hunters and duck hunters. Anyway, I'll go to October 15th. I mean, I'll, I'll split the water with you, so.
Well, you got my vote if you go to November 15th.
I might take a chance.
So you're going July 1st, October 15th, is that correct?
Yep.
And the secondor?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Clarifying question, does that mean that there will need to be additional water storage and is that at staff discretion to be able to comply with forbearance?
We're, we're giving him the opportunity to see, but if he knows forbearance is going to kick in on October 15th, he will probably put in some storage this year. My problem with jumping on that bandwagon is a lot like Supervisor Wilson said, we're trying to convince people to do, even catch water at their homes, which is the only way it is, is those 55-gallon plastic drums, but we're reusing a lot of those. But with that being, and I said it to Supervisor Madron, this would be a good issue. You could start up the California barrel factory in Arcata and start making big oak. But anyway, redwood. Anyway, with that being said, that's going to allow them one year to do a monitoring and then they have to have the water to meet that level on the second year, right? 2025. Is that, my numbers right there?
If, if that's the motion, so that, the way I'm understanding what you're going to say is starting in?
They're going to do a monitoring this year. We're doing, we're doing growing years. We're not doing calendar years. So, so they're going to monitor this year. We're going to see where we're at, if we're drastically missing, if they come to you and says, hey, we're, we ran way shy.
Did, did you want one or two years of monitoring? So that's cultivation season '24, cultivation season '25.
Problem solved by '26 then?
Yes.
Okay, I'm, that's, okay.
So yeah, if we have forbearance that goes from July 1st to November 15th, the storage doesn't matter. That's going to be up to them based on their monitoring to determine how much more storage they need to meet their irrigation requirements, right? I mean, I'm just saying in a practical sense, the most important part is to forbear from pumping during the dry season to protect adjacent wells, streams, et cetera. And if you have that in place, how much storage gets added is based on the monitoring.
I'll go November 15th. You're rushing my kid wanting another cookie.
With that, I can support it. So any further discussion?
I saw Supervisor Bushnell.
Supervisor Bushnell, did you have something else you want to say? Are you okay with that change?
I just, yes, I'm okay with it. I just want to stop the lecturing, please. And we, you're going to forbear for quite a long time and so you're going to have extra water that's already going to be there. So I, I do appreciate you willing to, to, you know, be on board with it because I know that you probably weren't. But yes, I'm okay with that as a secondor.
Okay. So are we clear, Director Ford, on November 15th?
Yes.
Supervisor Wilson?
Just for, in, for future reference when we have these setback issues, another tool would be conservation easements, so thanks.
So is the conservation easement would be at the discretion of the landowner, is that correct?
Well, I mean.
Yes or, yes or no?
It's not a yes or no question because the, because the discretion really is upon, they can use that as a tool or not and we can decide whether it's.
No, I understand that if they don't want to do it, we would deny, but if, if, you know, it would be, you know, if they will, would do it, we would approve. I understand that, but it still would be at the discretion of the landowner wanting to do the eas, the conservation easement. Is that right?
I mean, it would be any, at discretion, just like any other mitigation would be. They can either choose to do the mitigation or not choose to do the mitigation.
Right, I understand. Yeah.
Sure.
Okay. Let's try and wrap it up. Go ahead.
Yeah, because since we brought that up, I mean, a lot of our mitigations are for the land, for the environment and everything else. Conservation easement, would that be actually considered a taking?
If it was required.
If it was required, it wouldn't be considered a taking because we're taking away the rights of the property owner.
Anytime you apply a condition, you're requiring something of, of an applicant. And if it's tied into an impact and you're reducing or mitigating an impact through that condition, then it's not a taking. It's in exchange for being able to cause an impact.
All right. Thank you.
Good clarifications. Supervisor Arroyo, you had a final comment?
Thank you. It is a final comment. I just want to, you know, I know this has been a tough one for the planning commission and, you know, potentially for neighbors and the applicant, that everyone's, you know, sort of acknowledging that this is a unusual case and there are a lot of concessions involved. But I just, you know, want to appreciate staff and the applicant for being willing to identify a lot of these mitigating actions. There are, you know, 30 or 40 additional new things that are going to happen or points of monitoring. And now we've added a couple more in this discussion and I, you know, this, this site has been operated for cannabis cultivation for quite some time, even before, you know, 1.0. So these are all movements towards a goal and while I'm not at ease with every single aspect of it, I think, you know, I can certainly live with it. So I'm, I'm ready to vote, but I appreciate that we've been able to have this detailed conversation.
Okay. Let's go ahead and cast our votes. I even got mine up by rebooting.
Motion passes 5-0.
Good work, everybody. All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate everybody's time and we have two more items on the agenda. It is 12:30. We haven't had a break for an hour and a half, but I do have to leave at 2:15. But it seems like we could take a quick lunch break and then come back and do those two items. Or do you want to just power through the two items and get them done and then everybody's got their time off? Let's take a five-minute break and then we'll go through the two items? Power through. I don't think they'll take too long. Okay. We are back in session and we're going to jump to the updated fees item on our agenda. Is there anything I need to read into it or CAOAs you want to get it started?
Sure. Chairman Madron, there is no reading, but today we have with us Deputy County Administrative Officer Jessica Masiel. I shouldn't be asking if I'm saying that right, but I probably didn't. There's, there's a little hitch in the last name that she, she likes, so. Here to present the fee schedule for us.
Great. And should I open the public hearing at this time, County Council? Yes, and, okay. Public hearing is open and take it away.
Brooke, can you bring up my presentation?
Okay.
All right. Good afternoon, Chairman Madron and members of the board. CAO has said, my name is Jessica Masiel. I'm a deputy county administrative officer in the CAO's office presenting the 2024 fee schedule for possible adoption. Authority for a county to establish increased or decreased fees and charges comes from California Government Code 54985, allowing counties to set fees and charges to recover the reasonably necessary cost for providing a service, product, or for enforcing a regulation. The authority to establish and update planning and land use fees comes from a different section, California Government Code 66016. But with a few differences in effective dates and process to challenge a fee or charge, it is similar and the focus is on recovering the cost. and the focus is on recovering the cost of providing the service. The reason we are here today is because both government code sections require at least one public hearing. And the last couple of years, we have brought the fee schedule before your board in the spring. This timing is a return to closer to when it was brought in years prior to the last couple of years. So as I mentioned, for all fees except planning and building fees, they're effective no sooner than 30 days after adoption. Past county practice is that it was, is the Monday following the 30 days, so that will be Monday, January 15th. Planning and land use require a 60-day period for effectiveness, which would land on Saturday, February 10th. So we are rolling forward to Monday, February 12th for effective date. So an overview of the changes. There are a total of 1,239 total fees, less 85 that are being deleted with this update, for a total of 1,154 fees. Nine are decreasing and 415 are increasing. There are 71 new fees. And 79% of the changing fees have less than a 10% increase or decrease, and 52% are less than $5. So here's some trends over the last five years. A majority of the fees still reflect no changes. There are a few decreases in which most are consistent with aligning with market rates or updating to meet a mandated maximum. Last year's fees were similarly distributed to this year. The number of increasing fees is fairly stable as several departments increase their fees by CPI annually to account for increased costs and inflation. Notably, high percentage increases are primarily due to staff promotions and departments that have not done increases in some time. For instance, the Treasurer, Tax Collector, County Council, and Planning and Building. There are more new fees than usual this year, which are mostly associated with deletions, such as Behavioral Health is switching to payment reform and replacing many of their fees. So departments with changed fees, there's a total of 424 changed fees, as I mentioned. A large portion of the changes this year are attributed to the CPI increases that I noted, primarily in environmental health and in aviation. As noted, most of the fee increases were less than 10%. Some of the fees that had not been updated in some time accounted for inflation and staffing cost increases in the Public Health Laboratory and Treasurer, Tax Collector. Planning and Building did not increase a number of fees last year for the increases in staffing costs. Therefore, there are some substantial increases in fees to account for rising staff costs this year. Additionally, the Cannabis Planning Budget Unit, as noted last year, was deleted from the fee schedule, and those fees have been incorporated into other planning budget units. And finally, the County Council fee increases are larger than usual due to an increase in staffing costs driven by staff tenure. So this is a breakdown of the departments that submitted new fees this year. We added two brand-new budget units, Communicable Disease with two fees and Water Management with one fee. Clinic Services created 18 new fees in replacement of deleted fees for immunizations. They had removed administration fees for the cost of vaccinations, and the vaccinations have been set to actual cost. Their administrative fees have been separated out as they are set by statute. And as I mentioned earlier, Behavioral Health also replaced their fee structure due to a change to payment reform in which their fees are set by the state. Here's the breakdown of deleted fees. The primary source of deleted fees as associated with new fees were the Public Health Clinic and Behavioral Health, and in addition, the removal of the Cannabis Planning Unit. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Great. Any clarifying questions from the board? Seeing, go ahead Supervisor Bone.
This might be from Mario, and I know we had this discussion months ago, and I know it's here. Does the new tobacco tax that we enacted, does that start on January 1st? Am I?
Coming up.
Because, what?
Is that right? He's coming up.
Oh, I thought you meant it was coming up.
Sorry.
Good afternoon, Mario Calson, Director of Environmental Health. The tobacco retail licensing fee would begin in alignment with this fee schedule, so January 15th and.
Okay, and then, the other question is, is I got brought to me the other day that somewhere near it says they cannot discount tobacco products anymore?
That's part of the ordinance, yeah.
Okay, and I just, I wanna bring this back, just, just for, and does this include cannabis also?
Does not apply to cannabis tobacco.
Because what I've, what I'm running across is, is some of the tobacco shops, cigar purveyors, pipe tobacco and stuff like that. A lot of the time, they'll discount, they'll start discounting stuff when they get to an age or when they get new product in to move a cigar that isn't moving or anything else like that. So this is, and I understand all the other rules so we can enforce the age group. But the lowering of price, is that, I think that's gonna, I'm trying to, I need to justify to them why we're not gonna allow them to discount a retail item that they've been able to discount before.
I believe that that is part of state law and that informed and is implemented by our ordinance and that was passed by, by your board. My understanding of the background is through our collaborations with our Healthy Communities Division, and they point to reductions. If you put things on sale, it's more available and more accessible for consumption from youth, is, is what I believe. So I, I can get you a better answer, and that's more well researched later, but at this point, I don't really know the background behind that specific requirement.
Could we look into that? Because this is, and I truly believe on the cigarettes and everything else, that they, they can order those every week and turn them over. But even like cigarettes are, which absolutely amazed me, are now $11 a pack or something like that. Used to be 29 cents a pack, two for 55, when I was selling them at my dad's grocery store. But with that being said, like, single packs of cigarettes are $11, and a carton is 99. I think, I think they discount for cartons for, so. No, I, I'm just, and I'm just guessing on that because I saw somebody paying $11, so I'm just taking it by a 10, you know. But with that being said, will they no longer be able to add those volume discounts?
I, my belief is that no, they won't be able to, to provide discounts for either singles or whole cartons, but that's part of the tobacco retail licensing ordinance, and I'm happy to respond and do some research and give you some feedback.
I'd appreciate that, because I've, I've, well, I've gotten accosted in three places I've gone to here in the last week, so you must have set something out to them and got them all excited.
We are, through the chair, we are rolling out the program. Passing the fees related to the TRL are gonna allow us to permit the tobacco retail licensing facilities. And so we want to educate the operators about the requirements that are necessary to complete so that they can be permitted and, and have their business in accordance with our.
I'd appreciate that, and I just, yeah, because I just, discounting is a, every retailer gets to discount. And I don't know if that's gonna, hey, did you hear so-and-so's giving 20% off? Let's, you know, at the junior high, they all run to it, because they all, they still have to abide by the law of 18, or, it's actually 21 now, isn't it? Is that right? Yeah, well, okay.
Okay, so you guys will be having a conversation about the ordinance.
Yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to aggress, but I got accosted on Saturday.
No, I can follow up with that.
Any other questions on the fees and the fee structure? Seeing none, we'll go to public comment, and I'll start in Zoom. I currently do not see any hands up in the Zoom. So we'll go to those here in the audience today. Anybody here in the audience wish to speak to this topic? Seeing nobody coming forward, we'll bring it back here to the board and close public comment on this public hearing and bring it to the board. Supervisor Wilson?
I'll make a motion to accept and adopt staff recommendation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor Wilson, a second by Supervisor Bushnell. And I believe we have our voting tabs up, so we'll go ahead and cast our votes. Maybe not yet. There it is. Good job, Brooke.
Motion passes 5-0.
Great, thank you very much. All right, we only have one more item on the agenda, and that is an item that I put on there on policy considerations for board member travel expense account management. And let me first just say, I am not interested in micromanaging board travel decisions of district representatives. That is absolutely not what this is about. I think we all do a great job of trying to figure out how to best spend that money within our district for travel and attendance to conferences or whatever it might be. What this is about is an interest in providing structure to our travel budget decisions and to also take it, take some of the pressure off of our county clerk of the board, who often is in a position to have to make some difficult decisions about any balance of money that might be left over. So what this is about is setting some policies around these issues and clarifying. So these are just recommendations by myself. I haven't really discussed these with anybody else. But one of them is that board members will not exceed their annual allotment of $10,300 for travel without board majority approval. In other words, if you go over your 10-3, you may or may not ever get reimbursed for it. Second, or B, is that board members serving in their final term shall not spend more than 50% of their annual allotments. There have been in the last two transfers of district reps, a situation where the outgoing board member has spent 100% of that travel budget, which then puts pressure on the rest of our budget to try and make sure the new member has a travel budget. And so far, it actually hasn't been a problem. It just seems weird to me to spend all that out on your way out. At any rate, the third item, number C, is board members shall review district total expenses to date at the end of the second and third quarters. We're getting to the end of the second. And at that point, I'm sure we're all kind of keeping track of it. Kathy does a great job of giving us running totals for our expenses up to date. And now with work with our great auditor, it's a new system that's been simplified, so she'll be able to provide those updates monthly for us. But really, you know, at that point in the year, you're asking yourself, what other things do I feel I'm gonna need to do in my district or attend other things in Sacramento or at conferences to benefit my district? And so you estimate what the rest of the year is gonna look like. And by having that fourth quarter, third quarter, fourth quarter assessment, we can then decide how, if there is any balances left, because traditionally, the third and the fourth districts, because they, you know, third, the fourth in particular is eureka. It's, it's traditional, but not necessarily set in stone in any way, that those two districts typically don't spend as much money on, at least in district travel, as compared to District 1, 2, and 5 with huge districts. So that's what that's about. If there is money left over, then I'm asking that we, as a board, give some direction on how that money might be best spent. And the last item is that board members' budget allocation of approximately $3,000 per district for CSAC could be utilized for other district travel. And that's what I did this year. We don't really have a policy around this right now, but I chose to not go to CSAC for several reasons. One was, I knew I was gonna run out of money in my travel budget for my district, and so I thought I'd save. It comes in addition. It's $3,000 or so in addition to our $10,300. And what I chose to do this year was to keep that for my district travel rather than go to CSAC. So I'm just trying to codify these items, and I thought it'd be good to ask Kathy, direct clerk of the board, to come up at this point and offer us her thoughts on this. Really, a lot of what I'm trying to do is take away the, the pressure on the clerk to have to make these decisions and instead make them at the board level. So, thank you, Kathy.
All right, thank you for that context. Couple of things and a couple of schools of thought. You touched upon the mileage issue, and obviously, there is inequity as far as expenses for mileage based upon which districts you represent, which basically frees up funding within your individual travel budgets for conferences, workshops, things like that. And that's something that the board may have to grab, gravel, grapple with in the future as far as trying to equal the fairness aspect of that. As far as money, funds being available for those in district, as you say, 1, 2, and 5, who have large districts and, and a lot of their funding is expended on monthly mileage expenses versus that funding being available to travel to conferences and those types of things. The other thing that really kind of sticks, struck out to me in the context of the overall budget. First of all, I wanna say it's not an issue for me. This is what I do. I do track funds. I do send you month, I was sending quarterly, but I do send monthly reports to you so that you kind of know where you are at any given point in time with respect to the funds that have been allocated to, to your discretion within our overall budget to utilize for travel, be that mileage expense or to travel to conferences. The other thing I really kind of wanted to bring to the attention of the board is, given our current county's budget situation, and I say this in all due respect, there's no rule or policy that says you have to expend every penny in your travel budget. So, and the reason I say that is because in the overall context of our budget, the board's budget, there are expenses within that budget that we really, we try to estimate those, those costs when we put together a final budget for your consideration and approval. But there are things that happen throughout the year that may cause some of those numbers to go over. And some of the, our budget is a very tight budget. There aren't a lot of areas that we can pull funds from without having to come back to you and request, request supplemental funding. So any overages or excesses in the travel budget is one area that we can use to cover those existing expenses without having to come back and ask for additional funding out of the general fund or, or supplemental request. So I just wanted to make sure that you are aware of that, that when we're looking at the overall context of our budget, while I do agree that all of you could use additional funding in, in the travel budget for the things that you need, need to do, travel, with the exception of mileage expense reimbursement, which is cleared out, spelled out in our travel, our policy, really, any travel that you do that's reimbursable by the county should be linked to county services and the ability to make that link between attendance at a workshop or attendance at a conference. And the county services are how the county's going to benefit from your attendance at that, at that conference. So those kinds of things are things that kind of jump out at me, and, but I just wanted you to be aware that we are tracking these things. I do understand that we get towards the end of the year, and those of you who have a lot of mileage expense in your budgets tend to kind of run out of funding. So if there is anything left over, we try to kind of equal that out if there is any additional funding in the travel budget to accommodate those, those expenses.
Great, thank you very much, Kathy. And I have to say, you do an amazing job in helping us all balance this out. Thank you for that. Supervisor Bone?
And with that being said, I, I would rather have, I've had Kathy for 11 years. She's taken money from me, because I have money left over every year, and helped other people that have been short. I, as I, as I've heard, you know, elections have consequences. The last one I wanna do is have us deciding, deciding where people should go and shouldn't go. I would like to see, bring back, tighten this thing up, because I didn't know, and I, I'm not pointing to anybody here, I'm not gonna say, but some people are charging mileage to come to and from work. Now, this was brought up, oh, 18 years ago, and Bonnie Neely and, and that board, they decided that was not gonna be. Now, I, I have never charged for that. I charge, Kathy gets upset with me, I probably charge two-thirds of the money that I go, but I. But I, but when, when things happen, you know, I know Michelle last year had so much mileage because I was following, didn't have travels far with, with the earthquakes. We were there every day for probably 12, 13 days straight. So, yes, including Christmas. So with that being said, and then attendance to conferences and stuff we do, I, I use, if I, if I pay to go to a chamber event, or if I pay to go to any event outside, I use my personal money or my campaign funds. I don't think that the county should be paying us to go to non, non-county events that aren't, that aren't, you know, not like a CSAC, RC, or those things. I understand. So I'd like to get clarification on that because I figured I've left about $14,000 on the table on just going to and from work. So I, I'd like a clarification on this and get this cleaned up. But I would rather it stayed with the clerk of the board because they know where they have extra monies, rather than them trying to tell five of us, where do we have extra monies? What do we do? And like I said, I, I've never gone over, I'm going to have a little bit of problem the next two years with the Naco, my Naco requirements and being on the rural caucus, but that's, that, that's a benefit. So if we could get a clarification on that, on how we, and then on what, what actually is miles, or if, if, if we want to put in there that we get paid to go to and from work, then I, you know. And then the other thing I've done is I've, I've never billed for a local meal. I've never coffee or anything else. And I know some people take meals out or take people to, to lunch and stuff like that. And I don't know who does or who doesn't. I don't, but I would like a clarification on, if you want to take somebody lunch, I think that's great, but, you know, we make, we make a pretty good salary. I don't think they should be paying for our meals locally because you can go home and eat or the machines. So those are a couple of things that, now that we're bringing this up and talking about this, that, that I think should probably be addressed if we're going to be really serious about this.
Thank you for that input, supervisor Bone. Any other supervisor before we go to public comment? Supervisor Bushnell?
Well, I, I'm not really understanding the content, supervisor Madron, why you brought this forward. I, so I rely on, Kathy, can you come back up and sit at the table, please? Thank you. I, I rely on Kathy. I travel a lot within my district and I, you know, live rurally. And so I don't, I, I didn't think it was an option on Tuesdays. I don't charge to come to work. I think that's a requirement. So I, I'm not understanding what you're wanting out of this. I, I thought that Kathy manages our, our funding and tells us when we're close. I went over one year, and so I've, I've tried really hard this year to manage that better and ask her routinely, you know, how am I doing? I got this conference coming up, so I'm, you know, have really managed better. So I, I'm not really understanding where you're coming from.
Understood. Well, I think I tried to list where I was coming from here in detail.
But it sounds, it sounds micromanaging to me when we, you know, are pretty much all adults up here, and I just don't understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, well, like I said, if an outgoing board member uses up the entire year's allocation in six months, that hasn't been a problem. Kathy's been able to blend that in and find a new $5,000 for the incoming board member to have a half year's worth of travel. If some districts are going to need to overspend and others are underspending, Kathy's done a great job of figuring out how that might work. But, you know, perhaps what I've done here is project into problems that haven't existed and trying to set up a policy to prevent them from happening, such as if there was $10,000 or $15,000 left in the travel budget getting into the fourth quarter, should that just go to the person that pushes the hardest to go to Kathy to come up with approval to be able to use that extra money? Or should that be a board decision? I'm not trying to ma, micromanage the $10,300. I say, stated that at the beginning of my presentation. In addition, you know, I guess it's okay for me to use my $3,000 allocation to CSAC. It's part of the, the budget, but it's technically in a budget section for CSAC, right? And whereas I have a hard time staying in the $10,300 and travel in my district, and so that's why I pushed, what was it, a year ago, two years ago, in the budget process to increase it to 15? And you said, well, let's do it for all districts. But then some districts are spending five, some were spending 25.
Well, can I ask a clerk for clarification around that? And I think, which was really very well stated previously, Kathy, is the money really allocated individually, or do you just do that?
So originally, let me give you a little bit of context. With, with the prior auditor controller, a lot of the object codes within our budget were eliminated, and the money, the funding was thrown into one huge just travel pot of money. And I manually tracked all of that money individually so that, there are other things. For instance, we used to have a separate pool of travel money in our, a line item in our budget for travel out of the county, which would include CSAC. Individual board members had a certain amount of that. It was $10,300 at their own discretion to decide how they wanted to spend that funding within that fiscal year. That would include, but it also included mileage, monthly mileage expense reimbursement, and then anything else that you decided that you wanted to travel to a conference or workshop, any of those kinds of things. I have since worked with Michael Evanson in the auditor controller's office now that we have a new auditor controller, and we've been able to institute those individual line items again so that I could print you a report at any given time and show you what expenditures are specific to your $10,300 that are, that you have discretion over spending. The other pool of money is for the CSAC conference, and that usually, it can, it can range depending on where the conference is held. Obviously, Southern California, it's a little bit more expensive because you have to fly. But like, for instance, if it's held in San Francisco or in Sacramento where you can drive, those costs are a little less expensive. So there's a little bit more money left over in that particular pot of money. What I will say about that is, anything that's left over gets swept back to the general fund in the budget, in the budget cycle, budgeting process for the next fiscal year. And we do try to, to, on an annual basis, when we're working on putting the budget together or the recommendations, we work with the CIO's team to try and figure out what expenses we know you're going to incur and make average allowances for the monthly mileage expense that we know is going to happen. So we try to budget those numbers as tightly as we can, obviously because of the county's budget circumstance, so that we're not really asking for a lot more funding than what you actually think you're going to need. So that being said, I'm monitoring that really on a week-to-week basis, based on the expenses that I process for you. And obviously, you get a monthly report per SB 349 that's required to show all of the expenses that each of you as elected officials incur on behalf of the business that you conduct for the county.
Thank you, Kathy. Any other board members? Supervisor Arroyo.
Yeah, I, I personally don't care one way or another how folks choose to use their $3,000 that, you know, could be for CSAC, or if there's a different membership or conference that you think benefits the county. I think it's honestly good for us to spread our, you know, kind of influence around a bit where we can. So if, if there's another opportunity that's, that's similar and offers other benefits, then I think using it for that is fine with me. The question about whether people in their final term can spend the, you know, the bulk of their travel budget would be tougher in, in the situation where someone's going to a runoff in November, then they, you know, they just wouldn't know. So that, that does seem a little tricky. But I think in general, I understand where you're going with this, you know, that we all be fair and consistent. I do think, you know, I will probably have the most left this year and be happy to donate it to someone else. I like that suggestion, supervisor Bone. I hadn't thought about that, about saying, hey, like, can I, you know, offer to supplement someone else's budget with this? However, normally, I think, you know, any department, if you don't have, if you don't use all your money, it just goes in the general fund, and we know that the general fund will, will, will need that influx. So I would just say, I, I don't see much that needs to change. We do have an existing reimbursement policy and travel policy that's quite extensive, and then there's a whole section about the board. So if we wanted to just add to that, you know, and I, I got a printout of it, it's a hearty book. It's quite, it's pretty thick, and it applies to all county employees. And then we have our own little special half a page of it that applies to the board. That's, that's pretty broad. It gives us pretty broad authority with our funds. So if we'd like to add to that, that seems like the place to do it. But otherwise, you know, I don't think we'd need to make a separate standing policy because then every employee can see what, what applies to the board and then what applies to the rest of the county staff.
Okay. Supervisor Bone.
And I, I don't go out and donate to other supervisors because I wouldn't give you guys any. But Kathy will ask me, Rex, you have extra money, can we put it in? And I will say, yeah, that's fine. So, so they, you know, you, like you said, you can cover the things that you need to go to. My clarification, I didn't know, and I read, and I couldn't find out about spending locally on food, events, and things like that, and home travel. That was the, the three things I was wondering about. I don't have, it's like the, it hasn't been a problem yet, so let's put a rule in there in case it happens. That gets us into a lot of trouble, more so than it helps things if I, if I go back to history. So with that being said, I think people, if, if, if you're running around and everything else, but if you're living, you know, in, in your district where you got elected, you knew you had to travel to here, you know, for your job, but you didn't know you had to go to Aunt Mabel's and look at the pothole in her driveway that you want to go over and see Aunt Mabel. So, so I just, I, I agree with that. It's just, but I, I don't know if we need to be paying the, the other little aspects, or if we can pay for the aspects. I never knew that, so I've never done it. I've always used, usually my own money or campaign funds, depending on what it is. So.
Thank you.
Which are both legal to do according to the FPPC.
Thank you. And supervisor Wilson?
It seems to me the crux of this issue is the differential between the districts that have to spend a lot of money on miles within their own districts. That's districts two, one, two, and five. I kind of feel like if we just had a separate line item for in district travel for those three districts, some budget $3,000 a year per each one of those districts, specific to that would be, then we're not, then we're not, then we're not, we're not arguing back and forth, and we're not having to borrow from one to the other. I think that just, I just think that the, the administration would just be simpler if we just did it that way. And then, then it would just simplify things. Otherwise, we're, if we're spending a lot of time nitpicking and micromanaging things, that also is a resource in and of itself that we have to spend time doing. And as I'm saying, it would just be easier if we just had a separate line item for that, the travel within those districts, for those three districts. This conversation will be really easy, and we will be done, and we could move on. That's the way I feel about it.
Through the chair, we did, we had that, and we pulled it back because the budget would, didn't look great.
Well, I, I think.
But we added five to every district.
Yeah, I think, I think everybody had $5,000 associated with that, which I don't, you know, our two districts, it's just irrelevant. It just, it's really like, it's nominal for us. So, so from that perspective, that's why I was saying, like, I don't, $3,500 per one, two, and five, that for me, if we just, would be, I, I just think it would be easier for you, it'd be easier for the districts where that's, they're, I think it is fundamental. There really is a lot of driving in those spaces. It is part of the job to drive all over the place in those districts. I mean, I have some far-flung zones in my space, but they're just, they're just, I mean, they're just not as, as meaningful. I mean, they're meaningful spaces, but you know what I mean? I mean, it's just.
Stop now.
I know, I know, I know. It's like, meaningful cost to, and, and also, it's, it's easy for me to envelop that into my existing travel budget. It's not that big of a deal. I just, we just don't, it's just not, we're just not similar in, in internals' travel. And I, I just, I just think if we just had a separate line item for those things, for those districts, just simplify it, would, just make things easier. We wouldn't have to have, it would be easier on you, it'd be easier on everybody here, and.
I second that motion.
We wouldn't spend any more money really in the end, so.
Yeah, that seems like a, a nice simplified, in the interest of simplicity. I think it's good that we're having the discussion, but if you want to make that into a motion, it sounds like we already have a second. Or we can just simply say, I think that Kathy, in her process of developing the board's budget, and CIO Hayes and her process of developing the whole county's budget, perhaps we just revisit this at the budget session and consider the suggestion that supervisor Wilson has been making. Is that, or do you want to make a motion, folks?
Well, I, I'm.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Recognize that you're the lowest right now, and that is probably in a problem. You know, we have until July.
Rex and I are both at about the same point in total expenditure, you mean?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I.
We're both at about $6,000 to $7,000.
Well, I'm not calling anybody out.
No, I know you're not.
Steve, I'm just saying that maybe right now is the, is the time, if, I don't know where we're going to get, maybe you just need the $3,000 right now, so, to get you through the year, and maybe we can make that motion.
Like I said, I think my utilize, utilization of the $3,000 for CSAC or whatever is, I'm going to be fine with using. I just wasn't sure if that was okay. There really isn't a policy around that, but it is in the budget is one thing. But Kathy has done a great job of trying to find the resources to help any one of us that has had a need for this. But perhaps it's just something simple we can do in the budget process this year rather than, unless you want to make a motion right now, I'm fine. I'm not tied to this. I just was curious about how this all worked and bringing it forward. So supervisor Arroyo, and then Bone, and then Wilson.
Yeah, I, I don't mean to seem like I don't care about this. I realize I'm the one with the greatest budget remaining for travel, so I just, we did make this reduction in the spirit of showing that we were also making reductions that other departments were being forced to make this year. So I'm a little, I think it's a very small impact, but it was more a gesture of, you know, showing that we could also reduce our budget. That said, you know, I'm okay with however you want to handle it, and if anyone's hurting this year, I am still going to travel in the next six months, but I'd be happy to share a little bit of my travel budget. I just, I wanted to point out that I think if we're increasing this, it would have to come back as a supplemental budget request, so we wouldn't be able to enact that.
That's why budget session is the appropriate time? Okay, supervisor Bone and then Wilson.
Yeah, and I, I fully agree. And I, I guess if you, I, I don't like that, that, I'd rather just take my CSAC money because that's, that is something that the CIO and, and, and we have decided that it would probably be a good thing to attend because that allows, there's so much that's brought forward. I mean, not just the new supervisors, dude, there's a lot of learning that can be done there. And, and, and so, so I appreciate that. Like I said, I've never run out, but you have to understand, I look back, when I, when I got on here, gas was 1.69 a gallon. Not so much anymore. So, and with my district, I, I've never had Tom do this. I'm not so sure how many miles of roads we all have in our district. I'm not as far as Mass, but I've got a lot of side roads and a lot of operations and trips that I make out there. So I would, I, I would appreciate that. I don't think we're, when we're cutting things, the last thing we want to do in a time when we're, you know, telling the sheriff to cut back a little bit, the roads crew to cut back a little bit, all these cut back, the last thing we should do is cut back our budget to go out and talk to the people why we have to do this one-on-one and show them that we have at least the, the idea that we care. So, and then the other question was I had, and nobody's addressing, do we charge to drive to and from home? And do we charge for, I can see, I can see charging against the miles and other things, but a lot of non-government, because I mean, we all get invited to 80 different foundation things and everything else. So I'm wondering if that is a, is an expense we look at, because I've never turned in one of those. And just for my own benefit, I'd love to know that because maybe I'll start turning them in.
Yeah, through the chair, I can respond to that. I did send out to your board the county's travel and meal reimbursement policy, and those specifics are detailed in that policy.
Good. Okay. Well, again, to simplify, I can just put this to a rest. I think we've had a good discussion about it. We haven't taken public comment yet. And that's the look. I'm starting to read you guys' looks. So I think we ought to go to public comment, and then, thank you, clerk of the board Hayes. So at this point, we have one hand up in Zoom, and that is 5288. And this is your opportunity to speak with us, and you're already unmuted, so go ahead. already unmuted, so go ahead. Oh, no. There you go. Now you can unmute. There you go. Welcome.
I made it this time. I appreciate this conversation greatly. I think I'm one of the few people other than you folks that pay attention to your budgets for travel. I'm a strong supporter of, Mike Rosen was very simple. I mean, I could do a formula, and we could figure out over five years what each of the 1, 2, and 5 districts spent. But I think for them to have $3,000 more for that in district travel, I think that's appropriate. I really want to say I really appreciate, I'd like, this is a public record request for a copy of the policy as far as how this is spent, because I've always questioned why some people are spending it on meals and some people aren't. I think you need a consistent policy, and I'd like it to be named the Rex Bone Policy, what he says he does. I think the public would really be happy to see that being done. So, there's no question as far as how this particular money's being spent. All of his logic I support in his comments there and strongly appreciate that Rex has been financially responsible in this topic. I did want to point out, I share a very strong concern with Supervisor Madron regarding what I call lame ducks. I think one of our prior supervisors before a lot of you were on here, basically spent his CSAC time. I guess maybe they were having all the special events and things down on the golf course is what was alleged. And this is troublesome when you have a lame duck and does go, spends our money and doesn't show up. It's no benefit to us for someone who doesn't participate nor will have a long-term thing. So, when this does come back before you, I strongly suggest you follow that suggestion and come up with a, to make sure that they're not spending twice what they should be spending during the time period, and we get next to no benefit as far as long-term institutional knowledge and ability to move forward with these important topics. That's my comments today, and thank you for my opportunity to speak.
Thank you, commenter. And we'll go here to the audience today. Anybody that would like to comment on this item? Step forward and seeing no movement, we'll bring it back to the board. And again, I think we can just handle this in the budget session. Does that sound agreeable to everybody? All right. Well, at that point, this item is complete, and we are now, we need a motion to adjourn?
We need a motion to reject staff recommendations.
Okay. I'll make the motion to reject the staff recommendations in this report, which actually came from me. So, it's no reflection on staff whatsoever.
Second.
Second. And so, we got voting tab still, or, okay, let's do a roll call. Please, Brooke?
Supervisor Bone?
Sure. Against.
Supervisor Bushnell?
Yes is no.
Yes. Supervisor Wilson?
Yes.
Supervisor Arroyo?
Yes.
And Supervisor Madron?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Great. Thank you very much, Brooke. And with that, we are adjourned.